I'm going to call this planning commission on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. November fifteenth, nine, two thousand and twenty-two. You know what I mean. Okay. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Real quick, some housekeeping. Before we begin, make sure everyone's phone is on mute. That includes all of us up here, so double check that. Not a fan of songs ringing in the middle of things, getting me off track. For those who wish to speak tonight, in order to expedite things, I'm going to have you raise your hand and testify that you will do so honestly. But first, I would like to have you address all comments and questions to the chair. Keep your comments brief and on point, and if you agree with a previous comment, please just simply state that you agree. So, if all of those who wish to speak tonight would please stand and raise your right hand, and anybody who thinks they might want to speak, so even if you think it and change your mind later, it's okay, let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you, you may be seated. Okay, first thing is the roll call. Here.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner McLean, excuse me, Preston?
Did he say Preston? Preston.
I feel like you said our names at the exact same time. Yes, we're both here.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
I thought my hearing was going.
And I will take a minute to welcome Mr. Preston back to the bench. This is awesome to have you back up here, so thank you. Glad every, you are healed and back. Okay, first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. I remind everyone that if there's anything you would like to separate out, we are free to do that. Otherwise...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and pull case twenty-two dash six hundred dash oh-two.
So I would take a motion on the minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
And we're ready for...
A clarification, are we pulling something from the consent agenda or are we approving?
They're pulling case, just talk about it.
Okay.
Pulling case twenty-two.
So are we appro, so we're voting on the, pulling that item? Or we've pulled it?
No, no, we pulled it. I just had it pulled off, yeah.
Okay, so now we're voting on the consent agenda as it stands?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. And, so we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. So now we will consider case number twenty-two dash six hundred dash zero-two, special sign permit at one-one-eight-zero-five East Twenty-third Street South. Staff, can you kind of give us a report on that? And then...
That's the reason, I just wanted to hear the report, report from staff on that, and I wanted to be out there so people could hear it, so.
Yeah, fair.
Basically, if you've been on Twenty-third Street lately, east of, excuse me, west of Chrisler, there's a new gas station that's been built on the south side of the street. It's mostly, it's mostly completed. They have installed their canopy and put the signs on the east and west ends of the canopy, and one of the signs, which is a Q, on the north end of the canopy as well. They wish to, for a special sign permit, to install lettering that says KC Quick, as shown on your thing. This is the north elevation of the, of the sign can, of the gas canopy. You have the Q on the, on the, I guess it would be the eastern end of the canopy, and then the proposed KC Quick on the west end of the north elevation of the canopy, and then the Q is on the east and west ends of that canopy. The reason for the special sign permit is that the total sign area of the two signs on the north elevation exceed the ten percent amount.
Okay, my question was, they're not putting anything on the retaining wall or nothing like that, correct?
I don't know anything about that.
Okay, well, because it's in the, you guys had it listed down here, I'm trying to figure out, are you trying to put a sign on the retaining wall, that's why I'm trying to make sure, okay.
Just this KC Quick on the one side of the north.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that.
Is that good? Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case twenty-two dash zero dash six hundred dash zero-two special sign permit.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner L., L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash six hundred dash zero-two, special sign permit has passed. Okay, now the very first public hearing case that is up, I need to recuse myself because the applicant is my son, so I'm going to hand the sheet over to Commissioner Preston.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have before us then case number two-two-one-zero-zero-one-nine, rezoning at four-hundred-north Osage, a request by Colin McLean to rezone this property from C to general con, commercial to R-six, single-family residence. Staff, would you read the report?
Yes, this is case twenty-two-one-hundred-nineteen, located on the vicinity map, as you can see, just a block off Truman Road on Osage, just north of White Oak Drive, or Avenue, I think it's Drive, I think that's wrong there, White Oak Drive. So you can see its relation into the square there. Property history, this property has been Zoned C-two General Commercial since nineteen sixty-five, and they, has existed as a parking lot for over four decades. Proposal, Colin and Kate McLean intend to convert the underutilized parking lot located at four-hundred-north Osage Street into a lot for a single-family residence. The project will eliminate a commercial lot on a block that is mostly residential in use of importance. Its redevelopment will eliminate blighted property on the northwest corner of White Oak Avenue and Osage Street. As far as the physical characteristics of the property, nearly the entire lot is paved. Redevelopment will eliminate considerable pavement, as well as produce the number of street access points from three to one or two. The lot is fairly flat level, so earthwork will mostly consist of removal of existing impervious surfaces. Abutting to commercially zoned properties, fifteen, fifteen-foot wide landscape buffers with opaque fences would be required at the time of the plot plan with the building permit. Consisting of a one plat lat, oh, bleh, excuse me, it would be, need to be plotted into, platted into a one-lot subdivision. Physical characteristics of the area, on the remainder of the block northwest of the applicant's lot lies properties that contain largely one and two family houses, although there are some commercial properties immediately adjacent, and multifamily rob, residents at the corner of Spring Street and Farmer Street. The character of the properties to the southeast is commercial with an office in the bank building and a parking structure. The homes west of the property are largely constructed in the early twentieth century. The UDO's residential design standards will require that the applicants consider an architectural context of the surroundings for their new home. As far as this plan's consistency with the city's strategic plan, the objective of the city's strategic plan is to build new housing units to fill a market need. Comprehensive plan guiding land use principles. The proposed C-two zoning for this property is consistent with the residential urban neighborhood land use designation, designation outlined by the comprehensive plan. The guiding land use principle most pertinent to the proposed zoning land use is facilitate the development of connected mixed-use neighborhoods where appropriate. As far as subarea plans, this site is located within the square district's subarea plan and is within the downtown redevelopment area. County records indicate that the property has an abatement three fifty-three exemption. The square district envisions a mixture of commercial and residential uses, and the development of this property would further that vision. Zoning, the proposed R-six, single-family residential zoning classification allows for single-family dwellings and various other uses, schools, churches, governmental facilities, home-based daycare, agriculture, whatnot. Currently, the tract is Zoned C-two General Commercial, which allows for retail, office, restaurants, banks, business, personal improvement services, hotels, construction services, daycare centers, nursing homes, government facilities, churches, funeral homes, schools, colleges, universities, vet clinics, entertainment facilities, medical services, and repair Historic and archaeological sites in the area, there are no apparent historic or architectural, archaeological issues with this property. It's not in a floodplain or stream buffer area, and all the needed utilities are located nearby and adjacent. Of course, as I mentioned before, given it's the change of zoning and adjacency to commercial use, or, or the commercial use to the north and the one to the southwest, a fifteen-foot buffer has to be provided for, and that would be noted in the plot plan. Public improvements, curb and guttering reconstruction would be needed along Osage Street, and of course, segments of sidewalk walks along both Osage and White Oak may need to be repaired. And then there'll be removal of one or more of the drives along White Oak, which would require, of course, the preference would be that both would be removed and the access would be off Osage. CP investments, or CIP investments, the city does not have any capital improvements programmed right there for the side area at this time. So, looking here at the zonings, so you can see where the small commercial is to the northeast there, and, and the one building I was talking about to the west, but how this property does abut existing residential, and how the, the block to the west there is a street of predominantly single-family homes. And of course, it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, when the comprehensive plan envisions residential urban neighborhoods. It's kind of hard to tell, but it's, it's the second color down, the, sort of the tan Here's an aerial photograph of the area, so this is actually on the, the north part of the, the, sort of the loop around the square, you can see that, the, the drive that goes over to Spring Street off of, off of White Oak there. Okay, this is looking from Osage, looking west onto the property there. No, I'm wrong. This is from White Oak, looking north. Yes, okay. This is from Osage, looking west, so. And then this is looking to the southwest, and you can see the, the parking structure off the old Commerce Bank building there to the left. And there's, of course, more of that commerce, old Commerce Bank building and related parking structure. And then this is back toward the Chamber Building and the other commercial use. And then this is north of Osage. And then this is looking back to the south, old Commerce Bank on the right, Chamber of Commerce on the left, back toward the square. Staff recommends approval of this zoning request, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or point of clarification?
Point of clarification here, I just wanted to make sure, what's the abatement three fifty-three, is that a tax thing, or, I mean, what's it for, for improvements or something, or?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it, what, keeps taxes at the level before the improvement.
Well, it, if you make, if you're part of the program, if you make certain improvements to your property, you get abated for a certain time period for the value of the taxes.
And that's basically, that's the older part of town around there that they put in.
That's right, there's actually three, or at least three, three fifty-three programs in the northwest part of the city.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, because people wonder what that was. What is the commercial to the north? Is it a business there, is it just an empty building, or does anybody know?
I'm, I'm not sure what the use is, it, it looked like an underutilized, empty structure, there wasn't any signage on it.
Okay, I was just curious, if someone may know.
Anyone else with a comment, question of staff before? Would the applicant give his name and address for the record, and then add any additional clarifications that would be beneficial to the commissioners?
Sure, Colin McLean, I currently live at three-ten North Main Street here in Independence. I don't know if I have anything to add to Mr. Hark, and Harker's recitation of my application here, I think he did a, a great job. I stood up here for moral support, obviously. But if you have any questions for me about that property or anything about it, I'm happy to answer any questions for you. I did look into that, that building to the north of there. I even wrote a letter to the owners of that, and I never got a response back, I'm not really sure what they do there.
That lot has been a parking lot for the previous forty years, do you know what they were doing on that lot before?
Right now, they, right now, they hose some road salt that's used to spread around here on the square during the winter months, and I'm sure they'll find a new location for that, it's not going to be a problem. Other than it being a vacant lot, I can't find out anything else that it's been used for.
I was really just poking you.
Some Santa Calagon parking, I guess.
Okay, so you, you mentioned the salt lot, that's why I was wanting to know, if we rezone this tonight, what is going to happen about them using that salt lot? I mean, that's going to be, it's not going to be commercial, so then it's going to go back to residential, so that's why I didn't know what's going to happen to it over the winter times. I know that's what they use it for, I've seen them out there with their trucks and Bobcat and all that stuff loading up salt all hours of day and night, and when it's snowing, so I was just curious what would happen to that after it gets approved, if it does get approved.
If it does get approved, they have a new location, I think, picked out to move that operation so that they can still have access to the road salt and spread it out around the square, but it won't remain on the site.
Okay, and you said you don't know about the pre, I mean, it looks like to me it'd be more, you'd probably like that piece of property to the north there, because it squared up a little bit more for you, but, but you don't, you can't find anything out about it?
I can't find anything about it, and I want to talk to the owners about that possibly in the future. I didn't get a response back, I've, I've seen people there occasionally, since I live right down the street from it right now, but still, I don't have really a clue what they do there.
Any additional comments, questions, points of clarification?
I'll just make one point, I also happen to be on the chamber board, we discussed it this week, we're excited to see something beautiful show up there on a pretty useless lot, except for, you're right, Santa Calagon parking, so.
Right.
I'm sure we can figure that one out.
Well, thank you.
So if it passes, welcome to the neighborhood.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please. Come to the podium. Please provide your name and address for the record.
Anthony Robinson, I live at four-thirteen North Spring Street, so the lot backs right up to my backyard, so we're excited about the possibility of having that parking lot gone, we just moved to the area, so it just, it's going to add value to our home, and just, I don't know if I can ask, if I'll just throw the question out there, and it's a one, single-family home that it's going to be?
One family, single-family home.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm in support of it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, but please come to the podium? Please provide your name and address for the record.
Mark McDonald, I live at four-twenty West Farmer. I'm very excited about this opportunity to get a single-family dwelling in our neighborhood. I know it'll be beautiful, and I, for me, I'll be excited to get rid of that pile of sand and salt that's there every year, and when the salt truck comes and tips over, it's a, it's a, it blights the neighborhood, and I, I'm all about trying to make this neighborhood nicer, and this is going to be a huge step, and, and I want to thank the young man that's willing to take up roots and stay in, in the neighborhood, and that's what we need, is more young folks in our, in our city. But with that, thank you.
Thank you. Lady Greggs, you know the protocol, your name and record?
Marcy Gregg, I reside at four-twenty-two West Farmer Street in Independence. I came to speak to another issue, but I do want to express my support for this application also, I live next door to Mr. McDonald, just down the street, and we have been very much about ensuring the, the security and the, just the prosperity of our neighborhood, the sustainability of it, and I've lived there for almost thirty years now, or actually a little more than that, looked at an empty lot all of that time, so it's very exciting to see that happen, and I'm very much in support of this, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to offer a comment in favor of this project? Thank you, please offer us your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Smith, I dwell at four-seventeen West Farmer Street, the McDonald's and Marcy's, my neighbors, I am in support of the salt being, going somewhere else, because it is a nuisance, it really is, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there anyone else who would like to offer a comment in favor? Thank you. Is there anyone who would offer opposition to this application? Please provide us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Jim Doherty, and my wife's with me here, Anna back here. We own the property at four-oh-eight North Osage, which is just the building to the north that you was questioning, and it's not so much opposition to having something improve development there, but it is concerns for the change from commercial to residential there with property value as well, even though it might improve that corner in residential, it could affect my property value, not being commercial, to be able to develop something commercially there. I did receive a letter from Colin, going back last year when Mom passed, she was the owner, and I guess have recently purchased it through the trust to settle the trust and get the family taken care of and stuff, so I'm a new owner of that property.
Excuse me, Vice Chair, but I'm not sure that we got the property owner's address?
Four-oh-eight North Osage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I stated that hopefully it's just the one to the north.
Raise your mic up a little bit.
Yeah, it'd be easier than kneeling down, wouldn't it? I don't want to break it, though. Does it bend?
He's tall.
It doesn't look like it bends.
Set it up on.
Oh, it's an acupor, very good, thank you. Does that better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I've been involved in the property, of course, it's been the family since grandpa had it years and years ago when it was laundromat, that's not what it was originally built for, but it has been rented, leased, in my recollection, as long as I've been involved with it for the last ten, fifteen years, without being empty, except for improvements that were made inside and outside, which was only empty at that time for like two months when we did the improvements. So it has always had someone in it, there is no signage because the type of business that's in it. Usually it's an individual that is doing things for themselves, and it's not a retail that's advertised for people, because there's no parking really around that facility to open it up for anything. And in fact, we were trying to get ahold of the owner that, I think he lived in California prior to Mom's passing, to look into that corner as well, and they used to maintain it quite well, and was trying to track him down, see if he was interested in selling, but obviously, McLean's were able to get ahold of that before Mom's passing, and we didn't want to do anything with that, but, long story short there, is it has that building been occupied, been rented as a source of income, has been for years. So the big concern is, for me, the property values, well, it might improve with a residential home there, for residential values, I'm concerned what it potentially would take away for the possibility for commercial use, and what that means to our property next door to it. The other thing that concerns me, while I know it is a single-family application for it, I also know when I was growing up, there was a big property out east on Truman Road called Massman Farms that was donated to the city, city put a proposal together to have that approved to build a park, it was all out in the residential area, had advertising of ball diamonds, tennis courts, everything else, it was put up for the citizens to vote on, everyone voted unanimously to put a park in, and the city did put a park in, and it became the industrial park down there off of Truman Road and Swope, and their explanation was, it was a park. So it concerns me, while it starts out as a residential, single-family home, what that then opens the door up to become for multi-family dwelling, another complex built up, you know, they had the new one, I think that's where Colin lives now, is the new one that's down there. Not that that's not an improvement on housing, but certainly for me, next door, might not be an improvement for us and the value of income we get off of that building that eventually may, we may be pushed out, bottom line, so just my concerns, I'd like to see improvements, and I'd be tickled for them to be able to build a nice, single-family home, and if that's the case, be good, but it certainly can affect me, and I'm concerned with what that effect might be, so.
I'm going to ask staff, there's a section that spoke to the modifications of... the modifications of that lot, because it is adjacent to a commercial, would you review that portion?
Well, um, where? All right, better just do it from the screen.
Privacy fencing here.
Like, well, I, in this paragraph, I said, I talked about it in two different places, but then here in the analysis, I said, I said, uh, given that the property abuts to commercially-zoned properties, they, uh, fifteen-foot landscape buffers with an opaque fence would be required by code. Because when we have development between two different, um, different uses, one more intense than the other, that's required. And of course, this being a single-family home, you know, the, it would, that stuff would be reviewed as part of a plot plan through the building permit process.
Thank you. If you would, I'm going to ask the applicant to step back up.
Sure.
Tell us about the structure that you intend to build, and and you may not have completed your full architectural designs, but.
I do, I, we have architectural plans for the house already, it's a single-family house. There's no plans to do anything but that. So that's, that's the intention, that's the plan. I have, I have the plans on my phone right now, if you'd like to take a look at the picture of it, it's, it looks great, it looks fantastic, but no, we don't have any other plans other than that.
You intend to fully comply with the changes because you're abutting a commercial property, you have no problems with that?
None, we'll, we'll comply with whatever requirements from the city.
Thank you. I hope that addresses your concerns. Does anyone else have any comments or opposition?
Are you fin- now, are you finished?
You're finished.
Okay.
Going to add, um, and Colin, you know, mentioned he'd written a letter, which I really didn't think much of, uh, at the time, because we did receive a blue line handwritten letter asking if he might be interested in selling property, but you get those in the mail all the time, and Mom was getting tons for her house and everything else. And it was to build a residential home on a commercial property, I didn't take that real seriously. So my apologies if I didn't get back, was expected, you know, to get back. It didn't seem like anything different than ten or fifteen others I get every month or so, are you interested in selling your property? So, uh, since it wasn't zoned residential at the time, and I had just been dealing with the death of my mom and getting the trust taken care of. You know, we just bought it, so I apologize for not getting back with you, I did not understand or know that it was really serious, it was a blue line.
Well, we appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
Okay, and just, again, to wrap this up is, I don't question his intent, but it opens a door. He might be five years there and gone, the next one may want to go the next steps, so I guess the concerns that I have is a business owner there.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The point on that there, though, is that we're going residential six, so it's going to be a single-family, to have to have it rezoned, they'll have to have it rezoned to have more families put on that piece of property, so.
Understand, but he knows that next step, that was my only concern, not that it would happen.
And that, but if that happens again, then there'll be a ladder to your property and all the properties around, if they want to do that, to do that, so that's how we cover ourselves that it won't happen that, at this point right now.
Well, I understand that right now, but just the concern for down there.
I understand.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any additional comments to offer?
No.
Does staff have any additional comments before I close the public hearing portion?
Uh, no, I do not.
As commissioners, you have any questions?
Uh, on staff, on the buffer zone, is that just strictly on the north side, or do they have to do that on the, uh, well, I'll say the south side, because, I mean, because you got commercial across the street, I didn't know.
I mean, according to the code, it would have to be along that one lot that's to the, on the southwest.
Yeah, okay. It's right here. Oh yeah, I know where it's at, I just wanted to make sure that, because there's commercial across the street, they wouldn't have to do it on that. Okay, just wanted to make sure of that.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Not a question, but a clarification. Just because I, I do care about your concerns, Mr. Doertie. Um, we're looking at a single-family house, it will make the neighborhood better, it will raise probably those housing uh, adjustments. There is a commercial building in between those residences, I hear his point taken. His role, his zoning will not change in any way, affecting his ability to do whatever business he is in line to do. So the applicant is Mr. McLean, and we're here to approve what it is he's asking tonight, but taking into clarification what the commercial owner cares about, and I think we've done that. So I just wanted to clarify staff, any, anything that would abut to Mr. Doertie, or there's no negative to him if we approve this residential change.
I mean, the only thing I'll say is he's already abutting residential.
Okay.
So on one side already, so.
All right. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Commissioner? And we closed a portion of the hearing, and we'll have some discussion here. I know you, you can't participate.
No, I, I think it's going to be a good thing there, because like I say, it's been that way for who knows how long, and like I say, I can see where people complain about the salt, I mean, I've drove by there. I mean, I see that.
Excuse me, Commissioner Nesbit, can you?
Oh, can you not hear? I'm sorry, yeah, I, I drive by there and I see the salt, especially they spill a lot of it out there on that main road, so I see where you guys complain about that, and I'm sure the trucks out there running in the middle of the night, making noise at, at your back door, so I can understand that, so I, I do, I think this will be a good thing.
Very. Tony, thoughts? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Do, all right, as presented?
As presented, thank you.
Do we got a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, staff?
Who is the second? Michelle, okay.
Did you need him to give his name? Call the row.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Um, let's see. Yep, we have, we, we still have Young on here. Commissioner, uh, L. Wyatt Wiley.
Yes.
And then, um, other Wiley's not here. Okay. I think I got everybody, okay.
Yeah, this, this has been approved, and we'll take further actions as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I yield back to you.
Thank you, well done. Thank you. Our next case is case twenty-two dash one hundred dash twenty, rezoning of seven oh one North Forest Avenue, staff, will you give us a report, please?
Uh, before I go into that, I received word this afternoon from the applicant surveyor that he has COVID, is not going to be able to make a meeting. And then he was not sure if the applicant was going to make the meeting either, so before we go into that, is there anybody here to represent Walter Bethany for the rezoning of seven oh one North Forest? Rezoning for seven oh one North Forest? Okay, I guess we can continue this case to the December meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we can discuss it and vote on it if you like, but the applicant's not here.
I think it's appropriate, Madam Chair.
You want to continue it?
Let's continue.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we continue case
Second.
Twenty-two hundred, oh, twenty-two one hundred dash twenty.
And Mr. Preston?
Your vote. Uh, Commissioner Preston was the second.
Okay.
Um, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes, case number, uh, twenty-two dash one hundred dash twenty, rezoning for seven oh one North Forest Avenue. Will be continued to, do we have a date?
Uh, I think it is the, uh, December thirteenth.
All right, to December thirteenth.
That's the only meeting of the planning commission in December.
Oh my gosh, I can't believe we're at the, near the end of the year, I don't even want to.
Gosh, I feel like I just got here.
You did.
Okay, all right, next case, case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash twelve, short-term rental at four two four North Spring Street. Um, as requested by SBD Housing Solutions for a short-term rental, staff, we're ready for a report.
Okay, this is an application for a short-term rental by Marc Latour of SBD Housing Solutions. Uh, he seeks to have a short-term rental on this property at the four twenty-four North Spring Street. Uh, the, uh, vicinity map shows the, uh, location, it's basically on the southwest corner of, uh, Spring and Farmer. Uh, it's just north of Truman Road, which is the darker piece there. Yeah, this, uh, property contains about a twenty-three-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot multi-story house, has four bedrooms for an occupancy of eight people. It's a white two-story house that was constructed in nineteen oh two, according to Jackson County historic information. It shares a driveway to the rear of the property with the adjoining lot to the south. SBD is partnering with Evolve Vacation Rentals for marketing and support services, including a twenty-four-hour assistance and monitoring of the property. Evolve will list the site on Airbnb, RVBO, Booking.com, and other similar platforms. There are no immediate, other immediate short-term rentals in the area, and and therefore they follow the density requirements of the city code. This is an older historic, historic primarily residential area of the city with parts being in the National Historic Register area, including this site, but it's not within the local register, historic register, and it features many larger, older homes. Some of these homes have been converted to multifamily homes, offices, while others have retained their original single-family use. Uh, we will talk about, this is the location of other short-term rentals in the area, that the short-term rentals in the area are designated by the little blue, uh, circle, the S in. You can see, uh, there's not really close to this site, especially not within the same block. This is an aerial photograph of the site, uh, the Farmer's on the south side of the rectangle there, which, uh, is the property, and, uh, Spring is in front, which is on the left. Uh, this is the front of the house, we're, uh, on the Spring looking to the west. That, uh, gravel driveway there that leads up between the two properties leads to a, uh, parking area for this property, the property to the south, and then the property to the west, and we'll take another look at that shortly. This is the, uh, north side of the house, uh, we're standing on Farmer looking at the north side. This is the actual parking area for this property, you can see the gravel driveway along the bottom there. Uh, this, I think, was a patio in the, in the past, uh, but there are enough room there for two cars. The other parts of the, uh, drive, uh, serve the, again, serve the house to the south and to the one to the west. This is the house that is immediately to the west, it does access the driveway that goes behind, uh, the subject site. Here, we're in Farmer looking to the east. Uh, those white figures there actually is a reflection of, uh, street signs. Stop sign there on the corner, and then that smaller sign to the right is, uh, no parking from there to the corner. That's what that sign is. This is the house to, to the north, across Farmer. Here on the northeast corner of Farmer and Spring is a commercial business building, I'm not sure what business is there, but it's been that way for a long time. And then there are two, uh, similar houses on the east side of the street. Somewhat similar of the same era of, uh, this subject property, here's the first one, and then there's the sad one. And then to the, uh, south of the, we're actually going to look down, uh, Spring to the south. Uh, this section of, on the right side here of Spring is a no parking area. And where that truck is, that white truck is also, from there north is a no parking, so around that general intersection, there is no parking designated probably a hundred and fifty feet back from the intersection. Well, maybe not that far, maybe a hundred feet back from the intersection. And then there's the house, uh, that is immediately to the, uh, south of it, again, you can see the driveway, which leads to the parking area in the back. Okay, uh, Evolve, the company, will provide twenty-four-hour monitoring of the property and contact the local owners, which is SBD, to respond to any emergency. Rental agreements set out the house rules, including no parties, gatherings, be kind to the neighbors, observe quiet times of ten PM to seven AM, not to block the common driveway, which is important because it serves several properties. And, uh, any violation of the rules could result in eviction and possible fine. They do use AAA disposal service, and the property has been inspected by the fire department and passed initial short-term rental safety inspection. Staff does recommend approval of this, uh, short-term rental with the following conditions. One is the short-term rentals shall obtain a business license in accordance with city code and comply with Article three, chapter five of the city code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Two is the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by the short-term rental section of the Unified Development Ordinance, and three is the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to eight.
Sorry, I was looking at the pictures. Okay. Um, well, is there any questions of staff before we go forward? On the letter from the City of Independence to the residents, it ta- it states that the maximum occupancy is six, and you've said that we're eight.
Yeah, the, the applicant's letter originally said, and I based it on, on what the applicant's letter said, and he revised it. It said, I think there were three bedrooms in, in the original letter from the applicant, and so that's what I put on the, uh, that's what I put on the thing that was sent out. But then later he clarified, there was actually four bedrooms, so I had to, I, that's, I had to change the letter, and, uh...
And how much parking is available? Could it hold four cars?
Two spaces behind the building, and then two spaces out on, uh, Farmer.
So for short-term renters, there would be parking, but for full-time renters or residents in the areas around them, there would be no parking?
Well, the, the property to the south, uh, has, I should have taken pictures of that entire area, maybe I can go back to an aerial of that, yep. Okay, you can see behind the house, uh, the shadow takes up sort of, the shadow of the house takes up part of the patio area, which was now being parking. As you can see from the house to the south, there's the, the large gray area behind it, that is all gravel. And there's actually a little sort of designated parking area, you can see behind there, there's a couple cars parked there now. And then, so there's enough cars there for the house there on the, uh, south, and then another for the house on the, uh, west.
So you're saying that's common property?
Well, there's no common area, that is just, the, the driveway is, we believe is split between the applicant's property and the property to the south, and then the parking area behind And then the parking area behind is, I believe, used by at least the property of the south and the to the west. There is no common ground as such. There may be a parking agreement between the owners. I'm not aware of that.
Stuart, is the, is the photograph oriented with north up?
Actually, north is at the south. I'm sorry.
Hundred eighty degrees?
Yeah. That's right. The north is on the south.
I was having a hard time getting my bearings.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
All right. Will the applicant come forward, please, and state your full name and your address?
Good evening, everybody. My name is actually Mark Delatorre. Typo on the application, apparently. My address is forty-two thirty-eight Edmondson Court in Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. Just tell us anything you can about the property and intent and...
Yeah, thank you for the time and the consideration. First of all, I want to say it's a credit to the community because after this application was posed, I have received quite a few of the property owners reaching out and have had some constructive communication with a lot of the neighbors, specifically Kathy, who owns the two properties, both on the south and the west, that Mr. Borders was referencing there. So I'm familiar with the difficulties of the parking situation. I know that the neighbors here are wanting a good neighbor, right? And SBD Housing represents a good neighbor, and so I just wanted to take a few minutes for everybody to understand who I am and what we do for the community. SBD Housing itself is all about elevating communities. We have bought and sold over two thousand homes in the twenty years that I have been operating in Independence. We currently have over seven-hundred-and-thirty homes under property management, so we are a professional property management company. We have thirty employees locally that are running my property management company. We're currently constructing at Sterling Village the fifty-two brand-new construction fourplexes with the new construction that you guys approved very recently, and that's going extremely well. So thanks again for your consideration there. They're coming along nicely. And we also operate other short-term rentals around the country. We are a good neighbor. This property was in blight. It's been sitting vacant for many, many years. We bought this property and have poured about seventy-six thousand dollars into the renovation of a nineteen oh two home. That's a lot more than I'd prefer, but sometimes you get in these projects and they, you have to do things the right way, and that's certainly the SBD way. We have remodeled to the highest of standards. When we do rental properties, we like it to be, we call it bulletproof. So we do put in new cabinets, new countertops, granite. We do LVP flooring to make it easy for cleaning. This has been remodeled to a very, very high standard with bathrooms and everything. We believe that the short-term rental opportunity here brings economic development to the city. With a long-term tenant, the person would move in, cook at home, clean, go to work. But with a short-term tenancy, what sometimes is overlooked is that they are coming to go bowling in the alley, to go to Ophelia's to eat dinner, to go to a Chiefs game or Royals game and pour money back into the community. So we're excited about that possibility. We understand pertinent to the guidelines that this committee has previously laid out under STR fourteen four twenty-two, the amendment, that it is very important to pursue good neighbor guidelines. So with regard to maximum occupancy, parking options, the exit evacuation procedures, the noise plan, we have measures in place to address these concerns so that we can continue to be a good neighbor. We will have a decibel meter inside the house on Wi-Fi so that we will be alerted if there's any noise. We have strict guidelines up front, just trying to set expectations that this will not be a party house. We don't want to be the house that everyone's coming to with, you know, for a weekend getaway, for a bachelor party. That's not who we are. But we do want people to come and experience the independence that we all know and love. We are also cleaning this property weekly and covering lawn care. One of the things that also is a benefit to short-term rentals is that, similar to a car going through a car wash on a weekly basis and getting a fresh detail, as opposed to waiting three years to get a cleaning like some long-term rentals, this property will be cleaned after every single use. It will be alerted to if there's any chips in the windows or scraping paint or anything. We will be monitoring this on a weekly basis rather than an annual basis like some landlords. We do have local maintenance. Although we are utilizing the services of Evolve Management, which Stuart referenced, that is a third-party management company that is very good at marketing and syndicating our properties around the country to get the maximum exposure. They will immediately call us as the local maintenance and local management company of record. So we will, my staff, we have eight handyman on crew. We have a full team of twenty-four-seven people that will be monitoring, and it will be my employees that will be addressing any concerns that we have at the property. The same people that rehabbed the property will be out there addressing any of the concerns that may come up from a tenant or a neighbor, for that matter. In summary, I understand that some of the neighbors may speak tonight about being jaded. There are some rentals that are being mismanaged in that area, and I just want to provide and give them some peace of mind that we are professionals. We manage hundreds and hundreds of rental property, including short-term rentals. We understand that a mismanaged property can be a blight to the area, and that is not our intent. We intend to manage this professionally and to the highest of standards, to not only maintain profitability for us as a company, but also to be a good neighbor. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned twenty-four-hour monitoring. Is there something other than the audio monitoring, noise level monitoring that Evolve is doing for you?
The twenty-four-seven monitoring is more a full-time phone call that is monitored. So there are any objections that come from a tenant specifically, they will have a number to call in case of emergency. I don't believe it's the intent to give every single, you know, neighbor that phone number. However, if they call Evolve and call that in, they could certainly do so.
Okay. And can you speak a little bit? I think you've answered this question fairly well. You're the local property manager. You're the owner as well, correct? You're engaging with Evolve. Are they doing anything? They're listed here as the property manager on the application, though. I see they're headquartered out of Denver, though. Do they have any local presence at all?
Yeah, they manage properties all over the country, including many in the Kansas City marketplace. Yes.
But they're not doing anything boots-on-the-ground local. That's you.
Yes, they effectively give us a phone call, and we go and address those through our company. That's correct.
Okay. So I had. Thank you.
Well, my question is going to be back to the parking. So what did you figure out on the parking on the backside with the other building?
Yeah, so Kathy actually owns both properties. The property in the duplex, as I understand it, doesn't have any parking associated with it. So she bought that, well, the south property so that there would be access. She grants her two tenants access to that gray area where the two cars are parked on the north lot. The one thing about parking that I think goes misunderstood also is that, and I use Airbnbs a lot, and I get to my property no longer with rental cars but with Uber. And I asked Evolve this question prior to coming, but sixty-seven percent of their people that are renting Uber to the location. I know parking may sound scary if you're going to have eight people, but remember that eight is a maximum occupancy, and this is not intended to be, you know, I don't anticipate it being eight occupants every single time. This could be, you know, a couple, a single, you know, or a group of couples coming to enjoy a weekend together. But Ubering to the location or getting a transportation to the location is far more common than you can imagine. There is off-street parking. You know, Stuart generously said two spaces. I think you could squeeze two cars in there. I think we all know if it was an F-150, you'd probably get one car there. But there are technically two spaces there, and then obviously off-street parking. If someone's there for a short term. If this was long term, there may be more of a battle for that off-street parking. But for a short-term mindset, when our property will likely be occupied about fifty-five to sixty percent of the days of a year, in best-case scenario, we anticipate, A, the majority of people coming and arriving by a taxi or an Uber service, and then they would have the option of parking one car behind, and then obviously any parking up the street or on Farmer or on North Spring.
Well, my concern is when we go back to short-term, you're saying, you're thinking it's going to be a week, but short-term can be as long as ninety days, according to our record writers, or thirty days. Thirty days, okay, thirty days. What if you have a construction crew come in there for thirty days, and they bring your truck, and then you got eight guys with eight different trucks? There's no parking. That's what I'm saying. That's, I mean, that's a legit concern because that has happened, and we've seen that happen. So that's where I have problems with not enough parking. That's why I think we have it in our rules that we got to have enough parking for four spaces. Is that correct? The new rules we set out?
Yes, basically, there's, you know, we calculated two spaces here and then two on Farmer.
Two on Farmer. I thought we weren't calculating the street parking.
No, you can include that as part of your parking.
Okay. That's my only concern, is the parking.
Heard.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant before we open this up?
I have one question. That's how many owners live around this short-term rental? How many? I was asking you. As the person who wants to move into their area, you own the property, you want to have short-term renters, how many full-time owners of those homes are trying to share the street, the neighborhood, the parking lot?
I don't know the answer to that question. I would be guessing.
Okay. And two, you had said you want to do what's right for the independence that we all love. You live in Lee Summit. Can you tell me what, it's a very esoteric question, but what you love most about independence?
What do I love most about independence? I would say that it's forward-thinking, and it has the, that, you're blessed in independence with the ability to expand and grow. I look at a city like Raytown that is completely landlocked and has no ability for new construction or growth. I was here speaking vocally in support of the development on Little Blue Parkway because there's forward-thinking. You're trying to bring jobs and growth to the city. You know, the vision that you have and the ability to take what is a controversial development, apparently, with the warehouse structure that is getting developed up on Little Blue and the chance to bring jobs was forthright. So I think the leadership here is strong, and I think you have good plans. So in general, it's a city that's pro-business, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Sure, we'll have you back up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Sir, will you come up? State your full name and your address again, please.
My name is Eric Smith. I live at four seventeen West Farmer Street. And if you notice between these two houses, that is my home behind, behind the one that they want to make out of an Airbnb. What is that, Airbnb? The problem I have with that is, you know, we want people, I love independence. We want people that's going to grow here and do something conducive to independence, to make the habit grow. Right now, since you mentioned Kathy, that opened it up for me to say this. Kathy's two houses has been grandfathered in, and it has been a nuisance who she bring into the house. And I know everybody has to have someone to, where to live. But what I'm afraid of is that people come and go, you know, and I say again, you know, we're looking for someone who's going to stay, plant seeds there, and help independence grow. You know, not a lot of riffraff, and that's what we trying to get away from. Because Kathy has not, and it's not about Kathy, but she has not been in compliance with the community that we live in. So when she brings them in, we don't know them. I mean, they're just, I don't know, they're just not fit for our community. I'll say that, and forgive me if I'm being too outspoken. But I would like to keep our community safe, you know, our families safe, and someone there that's going to help, help independence grow. That's all.
Thank you. We value your voice. We value hearing all the different opinions, so don't apologize.
Question to staff. The houses that he referenced, those are rental properties and are not short-term. Am I correct?
They're not shown up on maps as short-term rentals. As far as long-term or ownership, I don't know.
But they're not showing up as registered short-term?
No.
Thank you.
I can go to that map if you'd like to see it. It's right there. That shows what the little blue circles are. If they are being used for short-term rentals, they're not legal short-term rentals.
And what are the consequences of operating a non-licensed short-term rental?
Well, they would need to come in and go through this process, and I guess if they didn't eventually, they would end up in the municipal court as code violations.
And short-term rentals that are a nuisance, they're licensed for what, one year?
Yeah, all businesses actually have one-year license.
Therefore, a nuisance short-term rental can be terminated.
Yeah, there's provisions in the city code that relate to cancellation or termination of a short, any sort of home business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this case? Sir, come on back up. Please state your full name and address, please.
Mark McDonald. I live at four twenty West Farmer. I had the opportunity to speak with the applicant today. I think he has a wonderful plan. I think he's put a lot of things, a lot of thought in place. I think from my own perception is his company wasn't able to flip it, and that's why he's going to try and make some revenue out of it, and I can't disagree with that at all. But it does not fit in our neighborhood with the parking. One of these pictures you have up there, there's a teal, I'm colorblind, a teal pickup truck on Farmer, right there. That truck belongs to someone that lives at four, whatever's next door to that house, on Spring. That truck is there twelve months of the year. He has a Jeep, and he has that pickup truck. So parking is an issue right now. And whether people are going to Uber in there or not, they can't park on Spring because that used to be, until we made an issue of it, was one of the most dangerous intersections in the city, is Spring and Farmer. I think the white truck, hopefully it's not a city truck, is parked in a no, no parking zone. The twenty-foot limit is violated on a regular basis. And I personally have seen two or three accidents at that intersection. So the idea, and I appreciate your comments on, excuse me, your comments on the parking, parking is an issue. The last thing I'd like to say is I think the applicant has all the best intents in what he's trying to do. I don't know that I would want, for me to go on vacation with my family, to end up in a short-term rental in between those two regular rental properties with all the issues we've had all this year. It's going to ruin, it will hurt the reputation of Independence, Missouri on what, I think what you folks are trying to do, the wonderful applicant here building a new house in our neighborhood's wonderful. I think I'm going to get to meet another one of my neighbors in a single-family dwelling. That's the future for Independence. And I can't, I have trouble separating the short-term rental versus a rental property. I think it's the same type of people that move in that don't have a connection for permanency and don't have anything in the game to make sure that their property is well taken care of. I mean, you can see the property, the front of the property, this, it's been renovated. I know it's been renovated twice in probably the last two years. It's not very attractive. The landscaping is not kept up well. The sidewalk is all broken up. That's my biggest concern. It's not necessarily with this applicant. It's with that house in particular, in adjacent, being adjacent to those two rentals that we've had troubles with them over the years. And maybe we can look at the records to see. I know four fifteen has been put in as a nuisance house now, after many, many issues there. So with that, I just gave you my two bits, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And Chair, I have a, I have a comment to make for the gentleman who just spoke. That pickup truck there, you can come back up for a second. Sorry. Mr. McDonald, I'm sorry. That vehicle you said has not moved?
Excuse me?
That vehicle does not move? The pickup truck?
Yes.
The turquoise pickup truck, does it move? Does it stay there all the time?
Oh, it moves occasionally. He'll switch out with his Jeep, and he works on it right there on the street. Oh, it moves occasionally. He'll switch out with his Jeep and he works on it right there on the street.
Okay.
Which really is fun to watch.
Would you say if it didn't move, it would be considered an abandoned vehicle that you could complain about?
I understand totally.
Okay.
Trust me, I would have called it in.
I'm sure. So you also probably were aware the broken sidewalk is a code violation?
It has been turned in as a code violation and it was closed.
Okay. That's all I wanted to-
Without any accident.
Those are the comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
You never know. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this, or against this case?
I'm not necessarily speaking against this case, but my name's-
Have you been sworn in?
No. I'm Kathy Brownfield.
Okay, I need you to raise your right hand.
I need to swear.
You have to swear in, yes. I need you to raise your right hand and swear to hold, to tell the whole truth before this commission. If you say, if you agree, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
State your name and your address.
Kathy Brownfield, 6110 Northeast Upper Wood Road, Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Thank you.
I own both of the rental properties, 415 and 420. That 415 has never been turned in as a nuisance house. That truck belongs to one of my tenants. That is public parking. He has every right in the world to park on that street. That sidewalk in front of 424, about five years ago, the city came to me and said, I had a code violation in front of my 420. I removed every bit of the sidewalk and put in a new sidewalk from one end to the other. 424 got the notice on, at the same time, and that sidewalk has never been repaired. I do everything I can to have good tenants. They're lower income and you cannot screen for bipolar crazy. I take very good care of my property and I dare anyone in here to say that I don't. It's outrageous. I think he has, no one in here likes rentals. The people that you just talked to, they do not like rentals. They should have bought these properties when they came for sale. I did. And he has his that he wants to do something with. I get it. They want single-family homes, but that's not what it is. This is how I make a living. I talk to the, well, you're not hearing all of the story, I guarantee you. And I wish him the best if he turns this into an Airbnb because it's not gonna be easy for him. It's not. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You state your full name and address, please, again.
Marcy Gregg, 422 West Farmer Street, Independence, Missouri. And I should explain it first. I don't normally come to planning commission meetings dressed in a scout uniform, but we have a meeting this evening and when I'm done here, maybe I'll get over to that other meeting. I've lived in my house since 1992. I think of all the neighbors that are here tonight, I think I have the seniority in the room. I can tell you a lot about that house on the corner. I wanna clarify, a couple of things have been stated. This is a single-family home. It was built as a single-family home. It was occupied for years as one. In 92, when we moved in, that house was vacant. It sat vacant for a very long time, at least 10, maybe 15 years. I lost track. But it was purchased, rehabilitated, and sold to a young woman and her, who had a young daughter with her. And they occupied it for, I'm gonna say maybe seven years or so. It sold, I think, in 2020. It was right about the time of the pandemic and the housing market started to go crazy. One day, she sold the house. She called one of those numbers or postcards that she got and needed to move and there it went. Somebody came in and rehabbed that house, put it on the market. Then things cooled off. They didn't get it on the market, I think, until maybe fall, so did off-season. Nothing happened. It didn't sell. And now we have this application in place. So it really only sat vacant for about a year that I'm aware of. It's not been many years. Again, it's a single-family home. I don't care how great a job this company or any company would do as a short-term rental operator. That's the wrong use for this property. I wanna remind the commission and the city of a program called Midtown Truman Road Corridor. I also wanna remind you that this house sits in the Truman National Landmark District. Midtown Truman Road Corridor Plan came about in 1995 and it was a plan to create tax abatements for homeowners in the area with several stated goals. It had seven goals, but the one of most importance tonight is number five, which was, and I'm quoting from the plan, "To reverse the trend of rental occupancy through construction of new owner-occupied housing units and the conversion of existing rental units back to owner-occupied, single-family units." This corridor area spanned, I don't know how many blocks, many, many, many blocks. And over the years, the city and its residents in that corridor area have invested literally millions of dollars in preserving the historic neighborhood that this corridor is in. At the time that we enacted the plan, we had a very transient rate of students in the local elementary school Bryant. We had an exorbitant amount of rental units, homes that had been carved up through the post-World War II era and carved into multiple, you know, living, dwelling, space within single-family homes. And the goal of the plan was to make this area the single-family neighborhood that it was designed to be, again. We've been very successful at that. For the city to allow a short-term rental in there is antithetical to that plan. We've spent more than 25 years steadily working on our neighborhood to stabilize it, to ensure the historic preservation, needs are met, to reinvest. We have an influx of young families. And to me, it's a shame to consider a beautiful four-bedroom home as a short-term rental when we clearly have need for more single-family dwellings in that kind of condition in our neighborhood. The applicant has had it available for a year. I don't know if they were the owners that originally did the flip a year ago or so or what, but that's not compatible with the neighborhood that I live in. I can see this house from my bedroom, but I'm just outside the circle of 185 feet. If I'd been within it, I would have suggested a legal protest against this plan. Couple of other points I wanted to make with regard to parking. I have one little gravel off-street parking spot, so I park in front of my house just down the street every day. Several other neighbors on the street are in the same situation. We don't have the beautiful two- and three-car garages you see in the suburbs. We have to make use of the street for street parking. When we have festivals and parades and such, parking is at even more of a premium. Sometimes I can't park in front of my house because there's a parade going down the street. So parking is certainly an issue and this house doesn't have adequate parking for that. It's already been mentioned that the two houses on either side are rentals. I don't know the owner of those rentals, but I can tell you, having lived there for 30 years, there have been problems from time to time with the tenants. It's just not a place to put another rental house, especially one that isn't already carved up into units. It's a beautiful home and an opportunity for a single-family, and that's what we would like to see it remain as. If you take nothing else away from this, remember the investment that this city has made in that neighborhood already, the millions of dollars we've spent. Property owners were allowed to apply for tax abatement by making improvements to their homes. That's what the Midtown Truman Road Corridor Plan was. Those property owners who were approved for abatement got 100% abatement for 10 years. They paid no taxes to the city because they were investing that money into their homes. The next 15 years, they got, we were able to get 50% abatement. And those homes are checked up on every five years to make sure they're in compliance. That 25-year plan is still in play. It closed out in 2004 to new applications. So we still have people who applied and were approved in 2004 who are within their 25 years. It's upon us as a community to ensure that the investment those homeowners made and the investment the city has made in its infrastructure in the area are protected. So I, that's why I oppose this application and I hope that you'll be in opposition as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who is against this case? Come on up. Thank you. State your name and address.
Anthony Robinson, 413 North Spring Street. I'm not gonna add too much because I thought she did a fabulous job of expressing how a single-family resident feel. We are new to the area. We love walking and seeing the homes that have been improved upon. And I believe our home itself was a multifamily that was converted to a single-family. So we are one of the individuals who benefit from the type of conversion. And we made a commitment to purchase a home and live in the Independence area, and we love it. And I agree, I do not believe that that is a home for a short-term rental. Living in another community that did have short-term rentals, and I know they're doing everything possible to keep things safe. But if a person wants to have a party, you're not gonna stop it. And I've had individuals in another community have parties and shootings occur, filmings and do another different thing. So that's not something that we wanna add and have to worry about with people coming in and out. Because some people will come in for the right reason, but others won't. And it's just a concern that I have about a short-term rental. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public portion. Oh, sorry. Yes, would you like to add anywhere?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate everybody's comments and just a few points of clarification. Yeah, again, I feel like we are getting thrust into a situation in this particular block of some properties that have been mismanaged. And I just wanna clarify that we are in no way related to these other issues that have been happening and we'll be doing our best to ensure that we have only the highest tenants in there. You do that by also by pricing. We will not be giving this, this house away. You can certainly do a price analysis and make sure that you're getting quality, you know, short-term applicants coming in to spend their dollars, and you can certainly do that by adjusting price accordingly. By the way, Commissioner, while I also wanted to reference that for the first years of my marriage, I did live in Thomasville Village. So I am a former Independence resident. When our team was constructing and reconstructing this project that took months to do, you know, our trucks and the guys' vans, where they were parked on a regular basis, Commissioner Nesbit. So, you know, we had no problems with, you know, residents at that time, obviously coming in to rehab this property. We had a lot of, you know, plumbers, electricians, laborers that came in and parking, although challenging, was managed accordingly. In fact, I have gone there many times and parked right in front of that van that's parked there, right in front. There's space for a couple of cars right in front of the, before you hit the no parking sign there and had no issues. In general, like I also just wanna say, I know that some people can just hear rental property and they kind of look down their nose. What happened in 2008 was a very real thing. And the American dream used to be all about housing, but this has changed. And what we see is a new wave of millennials that are coming in realizing that housing, to them, having been brought up in the late 90s to early 2000s, is chiefly associated with foreclosure and bankruptcy and divorce and financial money issues. You know, there are countless articles being written on the way that rentals now, there are build-to-rent communities. We're actually doing build-to-rent communities with short-term rentals, excuse me, with long-term rentals, build-to-rent communities in the Kansas City area in Lee, City of Lee's Summit right now. So, you know, I just, I would challenge the panel to not look down the nose at the ability of people that choose to rent in general. And again, this being just a short-term. I have no further questions unless, any comments unless there are questions for me specifically.
Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? All right, I think we're good. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna close the public portion of this hearing. Commissioners, any discussion, any more questions of staff or discussion between us?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, not so much a question, but a comment. I think this commission has entertained a great number of short-term rental applications. What we have witnessed over the so many years now is the general positive impact of short-term rentals. In many instances, they are not corporate-owned. They are individual-owned and the impact to the community has been very positive because finally homeowners are able to generate income that are plowed back into that property. Also, short-term rental market is highly competitive. I'll reference the Airbnb platform, for instance. And you have various tiers of owner, owner, operators. And I think the gold standard is, I forget what the name-
Superhost.
Superhost. And they get first dibs and most attention. It's highly competitive. Not only are these owners rated, but also the tenants, the short-term tenants are rated. My point is, there's always opportunity for bad apples. But what we have noticed is the positive impact of short-term rentals. Finally, I mentioned this earlier. One of the benefits of these short-term rentals is if perchance they become a problem, their license is for one year. It will not be renewed if it's a problem. I don't think we've had much of an issue with that. Give them a chance. Give them a chance. 10 years of vacancy, years of rehabs. I think this may be a turning point. And I think you will find short-term rentals to be a very positive impact in your neighborhood. That's what we have seen. A year back, Madam Chair?
You know, I'm going to slightly disagree with you. I know. I don't know, I don't know what's happening. I know. But, and I, you know that I believe in Airbnbs. I think they can be a good investment. I think they can be good for a city, especially one that has such high tourism or should have such high tourism as Independence. But some, there was a comment that caught, caught me. And I'm not sure which, who, which one said it, but it was that when you are between two rentals in Independence, particularly in this neighborhood, if you're the one staying between two rentals that are not, you know, whether it's just the inhabitants that are not necessarily compliant or, you know, great to live next door, that's your impression of Independence, that really bothers me a lot because, as you all know, I love this city and I hate it when people talk bad about it. And we do have this stigma that, you know, we, we have a long way to go. And I hate that because we are a great city, full of great people. And I don't, I would hate for people to visit and have that, that lasting impression. So that really caught me and kinda derailed my thoughts a little bit. So, I don't know.
Now, where did you disagree with me, Madam Chair?
You're right, maybe I didn't. Exactly.
Of course not.
I just expanded.
Ma- Madam Chair?
Yes.
As you know, I've thought a lot about this, been researching it. Overall, I'm struggling to approve any more short-term rentals. And I think the reason why is because we've had approved short-term rentals for years with what I would call very short-sighted or no codes. And we've only now started putting together regulations to talk about penalties to poor short-term rental owners or violators. We don't really have teeth yet. And that concerns me as someone who cares about and loves my city as well. But it is my angst for the homeowners in these neighborhoods with short-term rentals or potential short-term renters. I would really like to see the city have the teeth first and then look at each of these cases for their mayor individually. Instead of, and I'm, I'm an entrepreneur. I love seeing small business owners. But I am also a renter. And I'm a great renter. So I could speak to renters. But I care a lot about the homeowners around me. So I wanna have a big-picture view of this thing called short-term renters before I just start handing out approvals. And I know that- And I know that the moratorium is probably going to go in place until these regulations get really done. But I also know a resident came forward and just asked, hey, let me have my voice. Because these are all regulations the city staff put together. We need to have citizens be a part of how do we improve those regulations? So that we can hear and put what are concerns for the citizens into those regulations. Because quite frankly, we've had codes about a lot of things for a lot of years, and we struggle to have codes enforced. So, that being said, I'm all for a great company to come in and improve Independence. But I don't want to be a fool and say, let's see if it works. I would really like to see the regulations first and then approve short-term rentals. So, at this point, my vote's always going to be a no on a short-term rental.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
I appreciate all three of your comments. Those are hard. I'm really torn on these because I see the, as a frequent Airbnb user when I travel, I see the value, but I also understand that the Airbnb market has been diluted by these, you know, investors that come in and, and not necessarily improving the neighborhoods they're in. I mean, it's kind of a bubble that's about to burst, I think. But that said, I do, I do use Airbnbs. And I appreciate the applicant's comments about, you know, maybe setting a price that is maybe cost-prohibitive to folks that, you know, might be more problematic. But I'll tell you, I'm looking at the picture of this house in the application, and I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to occupy this short-term rental for, you know, a good rate. You know, for a, for a rate that I think we're talking about here. The outside of the facility, or the outside of the, the home I don't think is really very well-maintained. This is probably a recent photo. You know, the sidewalks are overgrown, the railings are in bad shape, looks like it needs a good paint job. As a previous abatement beneficiary in the neighborhoods west of the auditorium, I've seen how those abatements can transform neighborhoods. You know, I know, I know what that neighborhood was like before I moved in. I wasn't there when I went through the transformation, but my neighbors told me. And I don't think this property lives up to, to that standard at this point. I appreciate the comments that were made about the, the goals and the aims of the Truman Midtown Corridor District and the purpose and the, and the vision for that. You know, and, and I'm also the beneficiary of a code complaint letter after I occupied my home, based on a sidewalk that was cracked. And I could have gone out there with some patching compound and kind of done an okay job. But no, we, we changed out that sidewalk. We took it, we ripped it out, we put a new sidewalk in. So, I think there's a responsibility of the neighborhood that has not been met here yet. As far as the exterior quality of the home and the infrastructure that's there, it's certainly, I don't believe it's code-compliant now, so. I'm torn. I appreciate small business. I appreciate the comments of the public, but I'm not really sure how to take action quite yet. I'm looking for some additional feedback from my colleagues up here.
Madam Chair?
Hold on one minute. Ms. Nesbit? Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for yielding to the gears. I wonder what did this property look like before the $70,000 was invested to do the improvement? I know factually, a lot of business homeowners buy a property, and as revenue comes in, they make improvements. And I can, I've not seen what it looked like before, but I can probably tell you it looked a lot worse than this.
Residents are saying no.
So, basically, all the improvements they did was on the inside, and you can't see it. It's all inside work. And that's what he said they did. They did a lot of inside work. Madam Chair, what I am saying here is that short-term rentals, I think, are good for certain areas. Because, I mean, I know, I'm, I'm sure right now, if we don't approve this as a short-term rental, it'll turn into a long-term rental. And then your long-term rental is going to be whatever they get. And then basically, I see lots of rental homes and they come check them once a year, maybe. I mean, and then we got overgrowth, we got peeling paint, we got trees growing everywhere. I see that happen. Now, a short-term rental, they say they inspect it weekly or monthly, and they'll take care of the grass and all that stuff. That's one good thing I see about short-term rentals. They will keep the outside of the property looking halfway decent because they want to rent it right away. But, but this does not go through as a short-term rental, I'm sure it's going to turn into a long-term rental, I'm sorry to say. Because I'm sure that's what they'll end up doing, since they've already tried not, tried selling it, and I guess it didn't sell. What I'm saying, what I'm hearing. My other thing is on this, though, for short-term rental, it does not have enough parking. It needs to have four parking spaces off the street. I don't know how, I thought our program said it had to have parking spaces, but I didn't mean street parking spaces. We mean parking spaces for cars off the street. And I, I guess we just missed that up when we did our overview. I thought we had to have parking spaces that were paved on it. And this place also looks like it's going to use a dry, a gravel driveway. And I guess it's not part of their property, but, so we can't make them do a paved parking. But that is one of the things also, they have to have paved driveway and parking. So, that's another problem I see with this short-term rental. But I know that if this does not pass as a short-term rental, it's probably going to turn into a long-term rental. And you guys are going to get renters, and I'm sorry to say, I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I'd love to say, yes, it needs to be go, sold as a single-family home. I mean, they've, it's built that way. I took one of these houses just like this that was broke up into three apartments. I turned it back into a single-family home. So, I know that's what it takes, and it takes a lot of money. So, I mean, it does take a lot of money. It just, we got to hope we can sell it when the time's right.
I know, I know we had denied a case not too long ago because it did not have a paved driveway.
Right, right, paved parking. I thought, and that, like I say, that's, that's the deal. I thought we, was one of the things we went through in our little case. I thought it had to have paved parking off the street for enough cars for, like I say, you got four bedrooms, they should have four parking spots. That's what I thought.
I was going to ask staff, is that a new stipul-, I can't remember. I know we just went through the, the new regulations. Is that a new stipulation in the new, the new revised code?
You know, I am not that familiar with the current one, the now-current one. They applied for this application under the previous code.
Understood. That was, that was the clarification.
Yeah, this does go under the previous.
That was, that was.
So, I can't, I don't recall right off the hand, right off the bat, what those updated version of the parking.
So, can I ask a clarification question to you then? If this is under the old code and we have a new code being considered? And so, if we deny this, they could come back, and as far as they meet all the current or new codes, then we could reconsider them?
There is provisions in the code about applying for rezoning of property has to have a cooling-off period, they call it. I don't believe there's anything about short-term rentals having that requirement. I don't think it's ever happened. I'm never aware that anything like that's ever happened, so.
Well, as a longtime citizen of Independence, code enforcement could prevent a lot of these citizen critiques? And so, really, it's more about accountability for me. And I think that until we fix that, we may continue to have these debates.
We're going to take, if it's okay, we're going to take a very short break before we finish our discussion. Is that okay?
Of course, it's okay. You're the chair.
You're right. We're taking a break, a short break at 7:42 PM and... Four minutes. All right, if we could go ahead and get seated. Again, just a reminder, if you happen to turn your phones back on, mute them. And we are back in session at 7:50 PM, and we can continue discussion. Does anybody have any other comments we'd like to make, or?
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
Yes.
Approval of case 22-400-12, short-term rental with staff recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second? We are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Michelle?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Jared McLean?
No. Case number 22-400-12, short-term rental at 424 North Spring Street, has been denied. Thank you, everyone, for your voices. Commissioner Wiley is going to step out for a minute, but we can continue with our, the next case and staff report. Next case is case number 22-400-13, short-term rental at 3421 South Arlington Avenue. A request by Lindsay Martin for a short-term rental. Staff, will you give us your report?
Yes, this is a request by Lindsay Martin for a short-term rental on South Arlington, just north of 35th Street. It's on the east side of the road, about three or four properties north of 35th Street.
What's him in mind getting the back door? I'm so sorry. Thank you. Sorry, we couldn't hear you very well, Stuart.
As you can see from the vicinity map, its location, it's in the, I want to say, the extreme southwest corner of the city, but it's close to 40 Highway, as you can see on the map there, and 35th where it intersects with 40 Highway. The applicant's property contains a house which is, has about 1,250 square feet. It's a wood-framed gray-sided house with three bedrooms for an occupancy of six people. It's, it's a single wide driveway that's added on to, so it's, I could call it a... It's, it's a single wide driveway that's added on to, so it's, I could call it a one and a half to two-car wide driveway. It's on the north side of the property, extends from the house to the street. Go through some photos here. Uh, this is the rezoning of the area. As you can see, it's, uh, all this area is a single-family residential, R-one, excuse me, R-six. Uh, just along Forty Highway, there are some commercial properties. To the southeast is the former school property that the school burned down. I don't remember what the name of the elementary school was there. That's that big brown area. Uh, they were going to actually put a, uh, housing project there that, uh, nothing happened to. It was a number of years ago. Okay, so the, uh, again, it contains a property, a house about twelve hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the, the neighbors, the surrounding area is a single-family neighborhood. It has primarily smaller homes on, uh, on the street which, uh, has no curb and gutter sidewalk. Most of the houses along here are post-World War Two, uh, housing, uh, s- smaller lots, uh, single-car garages, ranches style. Uh, there are two short-term rentals in the area. One is right across the street at thirty-one tw- excuse me, thirty-four twenty-eight South Arlington, which was approved in, uh, September of nineteen. And another one to the west at, uh, thirty-four nineteen South Denton, which was approved in, uh, earlier this year. As you can see from the, uh, this is the nearby short-term rentals. Again, where the S's and the circles are are short-term rentals. The applicant's property is just essentially right across the street, just a little bit. This is the, uh, aerial photo of the site. The applicant's property is in red. You can see, uh, s- the houses along this area are pretty much ranch-style, basic, uh, they all look similar as we get into the photographs. Excuse me. Okay, um, the applicants, uh, say they have listed the property or going to list the property on Airbnb and RVBO sites. It will be managed by Real R B and B, excuse me, yeah, Real R, Real B and B, a company based in Kansas City. And they will be responsible for most of the business operations, including screening customers and coordinating bookings. For security, the property will utilize noise monitoring software and external cameras with Real B and B addressing any guest issues. And they, uh, intend to install a noise monitoring system to ensure that reasonable amounts of noise levels are not exceeded. The tenants will be contacted by phone with verbal warning. If not, the property manager will visit the property and resolve any noise issues. Or to cancel the booking and ev- the guest. Ten's Trash has already, uh, established week, weekly pickup for the property. And then the recent, uh, safety inspection did detect a couple of minor issues that need to be corrected before being passed and the business license is being approved. Okay, this is the, uh, front of the property. Okay, as you can see, it's a, uh, basically a s- a smaller, single-family ranch. Uh, where the driveway goes, uh, dead ends at the house, I believe that was a previously a garage. As you look at other houses along the street, the garage generally in the same place. Uh, you see that in older neighborhoods, sometimes they'll convert the garage into a family room or another bedroom, something like that. Uh, this is the area of the, uh, driveway that needs improvement, as noted in your staff report. The paved driveway, uh, is, starts about ten feet in from the curb of the street, the edge of the pavement of the street. But for whatever reason, that section of it, of the driveway shown is gravelled. And, uh, staff has, uh, listed that as a condition that this section be paved to match the, uh, existing concrete drive. This is the house that's immediately south of the site. Again, you can see the simi- similarity between this property and the, uh, applicant's property. Again, the driveway inside and garage on the left side of the property. Here, we're looking down South Arlington towards Thirty-Fifth Street, which is off in the distance there. Couple more houses across the street. Again, the driveway's, uh, just, this has been improved since, uh, it was built, but, uh, similar in design. The house may be a little bit bigger than this, the applicant's site. This is the one that's essentially across the street or to the west, slightly northwest of this. Again, the driveway leads to a single-car garage at one end of the, of the house. Here, we're looking north up South Arlington Avenue. Uh, the other houses along here, you can see from this photograph, are again, similar to the applicant's property. This is the property that's immediately north of the site. Again, very similar, you have the single-car garage, a single-car garage accessed by a single-wide driveway. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the short, of this short-term rental with the following conditions. Uh, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The mis- the business must resolve any pending current safety issues noted in the attached fire inspection and comply with all safety and other standards established by the short-term rental section of the Unified Development Ordinance. The minimum, excuse me, the maximum occupancy of the prem- premises is limited to six. The section of the driveway between the street pavement and the concrete portion of the driveway must also be paved with an all-weather surface, asphalt or concrete. This must be completed before the approval of the business license. And then the noise, noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated prior to the approval of their business license.
Thank you. All right, the commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before we bring the applicant forward? Okay, will the applicant come forward, please? And state your phone name and your address.
Hello, I'm Lindsey Martin. I live at seven nine nine four Northwest Mace Road in Kansas City. Um, I feel like there is not a lot I can add to the discussion that was had to the previous property. Um, other than, this is our first investment property. We, we do not have hundreds that we are looking after. This has been, uh, I've been a stay-at-home mom for seven years. And this has been my foray back into working. Yeah, this, um, we took time to, to find the right property in, in a great location. Um, that neighborhood is wonderful. I've spoken, Mrs. Bowen lives in that yellow house right there. She's eighty years old. I'd love to take my, my youngest daughter over to talk to her. And I very much want to protect the integrity of that neighborhood, uh, with this home. Um, I have been, my, the property management company can attest to the fact that I have, uh, pestered them nonstop about taking care of, uh, any issues that come up to be taken care of promptly because I myself am a rule follower. And I, I like to be prompt and take care of things as they come up. Um, there will be noise monitoring, uh, on the property. There are cameras at the front and back door to make sure that occupancy, um, guidelines are not disobeyed. Uh, the company that I have chosen to, uh, manage the property is a local company. They're here in Kansas City. Uh, in the three years that they have been operating, they have had two house parties that thanks to the noise level monitors were shut down within the hour and the occupants were evicted, uh, and the booking was canceled. Um, and I, that was one of the reasons I chose them, because I do not want to disturb the current residents in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, now, as to the parking and the driveway, do you plan on getting that fixed? No problem?
Uh, yes, I actually had, I've contacted, I got the email this weekend and I, um, contacted a couple companies to get bids on having that asphalt covered on that for the.
Now, are you gonna take it? I mean, he said, you said it was only one and a half wide, is that right?
Well, it's wider than a single car, but maybe not a full two-car wide driveway.
Okay, so now I'm back to the point again that our rules say with, so three bedrooms, gotta be able to put three cars on there.
Well, I think w- once the, uh, it's a house that's decently back from the, uh, from the street.
I see that, but if they're, they can only park two cars, you, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, it looks like to me it's probably somewhere about forty-five feet long. And basically, that's two cars, third car stay out on the street. And she plans on making that a little bit wider so they can put four cars there, I'd be great with it, but I don't know what her plans are with that. That's something that I like to look at and that's something that we're trying to get enforced, so.
We certainly, while I was, um, working on the property right after we, uh, bought it in September, um, we personally have had four cars easily. I drive an Expedition, my aunt drives a van. And we had two sedans behind those cars comfortably in the driveway.
Okay, yeah, well, if it's wide enough for four cars, I mean, that's two cars, that'd be great, so. That's all, and so basically you got a third bedroom in the garage that where you, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then exit points are good according to our new rules and everything?
Yes, they passed the fire inspection.
Uh, but I'm asking about the newer rules that we've come out with, 'cause you applied.
No, they applied before those, those are actually not in effect yet. I was incorrect before, but they applied before those went through the planning commission.
Okay, I understand that, but I wanted her to know that before she can get the license, next time renewed, does she have to apply to it? Renewals?
Well, yeah, she, she has to renew it. I don't know that she's re- required to update it to the current standards. No, it would be the standards that would be in place when she was approved originally.
Basically, their grandfather Dan wants that we approve it, is what you're saying.
That would be my, uh, my understanding, yes. I don't know if the counselor would wanna, would, uh, wanna, uh, address that further, but, uh.
May I ask what the standard is?
Uh, we, we went through some new rules, uh, last meeting that we approved to go through city council. And, and things are exits and then signs posted, uh, the driveway and then like I say, the parking. I'm trying to remember all the rules that we put out there. There's quite, there's quite a few.
The sound, um, which she's doing.
See, I'm sign, so I monitor what you are doing.
There are signs in each bedroom that have, uh, exits posted, primary and secondary exits in each bedroom.
But also, I think they're supposed to be posted signs with your name or whoever's doing the, uh.
It also has a property management name and phone number.
Okay, yeah, I thought you said.
That was another one. And then having somebody close.
Yeah, and saying somebody close, so I mean, I don't, you, I didn't catch where you lived at. Do you live close or?
I live up at the airport.
Uh, by the airport, oh, that's within twenty, thirty minutes of, okay, that's just my question.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think this may be a wonderful opportunity for the council to wade in into a point of clarification. Would you counsel?
Yes, the standards that apply at the time of approval would be what would be judged for or reviewed at the time that the business license is up for renewal. Yes.
Are we good? Any more questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll probably bring you back up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak a, for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Seeing none, does anybody have any more, any other questions to the applicant before I close this public hearing? Okay, public portion of this hearing is closed. Um, commissioners, any more discussion, questions? I write, entertain a motion.
Well, Madam Chair, as, this one here looks something like the other one that we just did. Uh, the thing is, is that it looks like it's more reasonable for this area for a short-term rental. I mean, I'm, we're back to, like I said, if we go with the, if we do not give them a short-term rental, uh, it'll go probably to a long-term rental, then like I say, it's the outside being kept up is one thing I see for the neighborhood. Short-term rentals will keep it looking nicer 'cause they want to rent them. That's one thing I do see that is nice about short-term rentals. Uh, it looks like to me it's, they're gonna get the parking issue, so I, I'm good with that aspect 'cause I, as long as there's plenty of off-street parking, I, I like that aspect of it. Um, I can't think of anything else that I don't see that's bad about that. And others, do you guys have any comments?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I think this one feels a little different in that it might.
It's not as big of a house.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, a big house, four-bedroom, that just invites party, if you ask me.
Yeah. Probably not wrong. Any other comments?
Uh.
Entertained a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the matter of case number twenty-two dash four zero zero dash one three, short-term rental thirty-four twenty-one South Arlington Avenue. A short-term rental, I move for approval with the stipulations as so stated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, and we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Sheriff McLean?
Yes. Case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash thirteen, short-term rental at three, thirty-four twenty-one South Arlington Avenue has been approved. Best of luck. All right, next case is case twenty-two dash four hundred dash fourteen, short-term rental at two hundred thirteen East Twenty-Fourth Terrace South. A request by Misty Kearney for a short-term rental. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Okay, um, as you can see from the vicinity map, this is, um, in the Prairie Landing addition. Um, the nu- new Prairie Landing addition off of Jackson Drive, just south of where Holkey comes into Jackson Drive. As you can see, um, that's, um, would be East Twenty-Four Terrace Court, that cul-de-sac, well, it's a loop anyway at the end of it. Project description, um, Misty Kearney seeks to, seeks approval of a home business for meant to operate a short-term rental at two zero zero thirteen East Twenty-Four Terrace Court South. Um, as far as the history and physical characteristics of this property, this two thousand, uh, forty-seven square foot uh, stone and tan, um, ranch house with, um, four bedrooms. Um, would have an occupancy of ten people. According to Jackson County records, this, um, house was constructed within the past year. Uh, the characteristics of this area, this a fairly, uh, new, single-family residential neighborhood. Uh, mostly, um, mostly constructed during two different time periods. One before the financial crisis and, and then another spurt in the last five or so years. The subdivision plat, um, east, east of Jackson Drive, which this is part of, is nearly completed with just a few lots left. Uh, parking situation, the property has a two-car driveway, driveway leading to a two-car garage. So, um, I think six cars, you could say four, it's a, it depends upon how long the cars are. Four or six cars could park on the lot. Four in the driveway, two in the garage. Additionally, a car could, uh, park on the street out front. Um, but the guest rulebook states there will be no, uh, parking on the street overnight. As far as unruly guests and security, uh, the parking will, uh, the proper, the parking, the property will be listed on the VRBO and Airbnb websites. Uh, the property manager indicates she, uh, lives nine minutes away from the property. And the manager intends to provide the guests with the rules to abide by that must be signed before the stay. Uh, the neighbors, wi- they provide the neighbors with the, uh, property manager's number. Uh, the guests with one warning, if problems continue, they will be removed from the property. Uh, parties will n- not be allowed on the property. Uh, renters will sign a statement that additional guests beyond the eight and ten people will not be allowed. Um, and there will only be given, given one more, the, one warning, uh, before their removal. Uh, trash removal, a trash pickup will be provided by, uh, AAA Trash Service. And as far as inspections go, the property has been inspected by the fire inspector and passed the initial short-term rental safety inspection. And so the following items will be provided to each guest, a map identifying routes that shall be provided to each guest and, and posted in each guest room, uh, carbon monoxide detection as required by CO- Uh, carbon monoxide detection as required by code, uh, childproof electrical outlets. Emergency contact information, uh, for the owner and manager shall be provided to each guest and posted on each guest room. Of course, the fire extinguishers as required by code and the smoke detectors as required by code. Um, so this is... Whoop, I got the wrong photo here. Okay, that's, that's an error, that was previous case. I don't know how they got in there. Okay, so we'll just go straight to the, the pictures and the neighborhood here. So this is the house. To the south of it is that flat field that used to be the airport, you know, down below, there in the valley. Okay? That's, that's where Prairie Landing idea came from. This is looking to the west there. Around the, around the, the, uh, loop. And across the street. And then, uh, down the street to the east. And this is the neighbor, of course, to the east. Staff recommends approval of the short-term rental request with the following conditions. Uh, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. Uh, the occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and all online platforms. Uh, number two, the business shall comply with all safety and other standards established by the, uh, short-term rental section of the UDO. And number three, um, the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to eight adults or total people of ten. Um, that concludes my talk and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before we pull the applicant up?
The only question I have is gonna be toward eight adults and ten total. Why are we keeping up in the two, you're, just cause kids can sleep on the floor or something?
I mean, that's the way the current...
Is that what the code says?
Code reads, yeah.
Oh, um, in my opinion, I think it should go back, that's, that's a four-bedroom house, right then? Correct?
Yep.
Four-bedroom house?
Right.
Okay, that, that should go back to eight adults, period, and a total occupancy of eight people, I would think. That's what I'd like to see happen in the future, that's just my opinion.
Commissioner? People have children and they take them with them.
So, four bedrooms, that's two per bedroom, that's why I'm saying eight total should be total. I mean, now they're gonna sleep the rest of them on the floor.
They can count them in the eight.
Perhaps there would be two infants that you would not leave in a bedroom by themselves.
I'm not giving you guys another break again. Oh, man. No, that's, good point. Any other questions? All right, will the applicant please come forward? And state your full name and your address, please. Hi.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous, I don't get up and run.
Oh, don't be nervous, it's just us.
So, my name's Misty Kearney and I live at two five 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 zero East Bunchu, Independence, Missouri.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I don't really have a lot to, I guess, add to it, but when we bought into this neighborhood, we did buy it as an investment. Um, I do value the neighbors and making sure that their homes stay, you know, like, I would want somebody that came in next to me to make sure that they kept it up and kept it nice and that's why we chose to go with the short-term rentals instead of long-term. I just feel that I'm gonna be the one managing it and I can make sure that it stays nice, that we're, the yard is nice, the property is nice. I, um, our stuff will be done on VRBO and Airbnb is where it will be listed. I don't allow, so this will be the third short-term rental that we've had. And I don't allow you to book now. You know how you can go in and just hit book now, I don't allow that, you have to request to contact me. And, um, I talk to every person that rents from me. I'm kind of crazy and go do some, a lot of research, so anything they've ever put online, I know about. Um, so I do really try to make sure that who is coming into these homes are, you know, I don't know how to say that nicely, but just are going to take care of it, um...
Nice people.
Yes, I, you know, that is how our family travels, everywhere we travel, we stay in VRBOs. So, I, we, um, actually just sold our home about a year and a half ago or two years ago, it seems forever, and bought land out here to build in. And in that time period when we were trying to find a place to live before we could get onto our land, the VRBO sector of this area is lacking. There was, it was very hard to find a place that for one, we would want to live in for that long or that was close enough for us to. So, it's just, I think, um, it provides something to the community, it brings money into the community. Uh, we're gonna be close to the hospital, so we hope that families that are coming in to see their family members maybe in the hospital would have a place to stay. Um, we're close to the stadiums. Our last VRBO we had in Kansas City, um, most of what we had there were softball and baseball families that came in to do tournaments and then would leave for the week after the, you know, tournament. So, I plan to give my number, I know some of the neighbors have my phone number already. They're welcome to call me. Um, but we want our property to stay as nice and clean and have respectful people in there as they do, cause it is our investment as well and I will be the one personally making sure that happens.
Thank you. Any questions?
Ma'am, so, that's a brand-new house built, or did you guys buy the house?
It is brand-new, it's brand-new.
So, did you guys build the house, or you have a developer?
No, we bought it.
You bought it that way?
Mm-hmm.
To just be an investment for our...
Correct.
Okay.
Did you say this was your third?
This would be our third VRBO that we've had. We've had, uh, one in Blue Springs, we've recent, we have sold, um, it was a lake house. We've had one in Bend, Oregon. That one was a little harder, so we decided to keep them closer to home. Um, and then this would be the third one that I have, um, done like the rental part of. And we've personally rented, like, I've personally done all of them, I don't have a company that does them for us.
Um, it's not a requirement of the current code and we've talked about current code versus incoming code several times tonight already. Um, but there's been a number of short-term rental applicants who have voluntarily added noise monitoring, um, to the property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are you, are you opposed to that?
We plan on doing that and also adding cameras, um, on the outside of the property as well.
Would you object if, if, um, we memorialized those intentions in the...
In your recommendations?
No.
The report?
Not at all.
Is that something we're allowed to do?
Mm-hmm. You mean, like, put it in the statement saying that I need to do that in order to get it, is that what you're saying? Yeah, I'm, I'm fully signed with that.
I don't have anything else.
Now, you do know this is only, short-term's thirty days, you were talking about you was looking for a place to live while you're having a house built, a house usually takes...
No, 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 we have our home now, we live out on our land already. That was when I was looking for a place to stay and we were looking for short, short-term because we needed only like thirty days and they were either way downtown or two...
Well, that's why I'm saying usually when people build houses, they're six, eight, nine, ten months, that's why I'm saying thirty days.
No, ours was just trying to get out onto our land, so it was just take, we just needed a quick thing. But no worries, we, we bunked with family, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, very much. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak again?
For the case, is it, uh, Quentin, I'm Misty's husband, look at I say...
You have, we have to, have you been sworn in?
I have.
Okay, then come on up to the podium and state your full name and your address.
My name's Quentin Kearney, I live at two five five zero East Bunchu.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanna follow with what, with what my wife said. She truly does, any person that books, she stalks them on Facebook, Twitter. I mean, she goes down the list and they don't get it, if, if it's not a clean account, they don't get in. She just will go on to the next person. So, I know that there's worry about, well, one of these people come in that are crazy. That could be any of your neighbors, I mean, the point, we do our very best to make sure that we don't put anybody at risk and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Come on up, please. Just state your full name and your address.
Billy Brooks, twenty thousand four East Twenty-Fourth Terrace Court South. And, um, there was some confusion, um, the neighbors signed legal protests and had them notarized, but I guess there was some confusion on when we had to turn them in. My understanding was before the meeting, which I was thinking like ten minutes before the meeting, but I guess it's a different, um, set of circumstances, cause the neighbors did go out of their way to sign them, have them notarized, so I would like to be able to submit them.
Counselor?
The code requires them to be submitted to the commission at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. So, at this point, a legal protest could not be filed.
Okay.
So, is there any way this can be continued then, so they can look at the legal protest? Cause, I mean, it was a lot of work going to each neighbor, them being willing to sign it and then get it notarized.
Counselor?
Code does not provide for such a process, however, um, the, the, this citizen may give testimony as to the concerns she has, et cetera, on that and what has been relayed to her.
Yeah.
Does that answer, sorry, Chairman McClain, does that answer your question about the...
Yes, thank you, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, so you can, the best thing to do is to give us your grievances and your, you know, what, how you are feeling about it. You will have another opportunity, of course, at the council, city council meeting.
Oh, it goes...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, it stops with us.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I will, I appreciate everyone signing the petition then. Um, okay, so my name is Billy Brooks, once again, I am here tonight to oppose the potential short-term rental on my block. I live directly across from the potential, um, short-term rental. And this is a new concept at Prairie Landing. Um, we've never had any type of rentals, long-term or short-term, um, up until two years ago. Um, when my husband and I purchased our home in Prairie Landing thirteen years ago, we did so because we felt the area was safe, it was clock, quiet, it was secluded from the hustle and bustle of the city and felt like you were living in the country. Lots of young families, a new elementary school, and there were standards that were established for the neighborhood, which will, I will get into in a bit. In regards to the potential short-term rentals, I am opposed because it goes against everything that I want in a neighborhood. We all want to feel safe, have quiet surroundings and to know our neighbors. This does the exact opposite. We don't want strangers, transients, living in our neighborhood. We don't want strangers coming and going all hours of the night. We don't want the noise, the extra traffic, or the potential of crime from individuals who are not being fully vetted by the VRBO. From my understanding, the only person being vetted would be the person making the reservation, not ever, not every person staying in the property and that is a concern. There are lots of children in our community that walk up from the school bus and having unknown individuals residing in this STR is a safety concern. Several neighbors have submitted protest petitions, which I mentioned, to show that we do not support this STR in our community. By neighbors standing together to oppose this STR, we are looking to protect our children, community and our investments in nest eggs. Lastly, I would like to let you know that Prairie Landing is a community improvement district, which I'm gonna hand you out copies of what I'm gonna go through, so just give one to each of you?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me look at mine, so it may take a moment. Okay, the document I am referencing was filed with Jackson County, Missouri on December the fourth of two thousand eight, instrument number two thousand eight E zero one two four eight one four. Um, the document is called First Amended and Restated Declarations of Covenants, Conditions and Restrictions for the Prairie Landing Community Improvement District. I would like to point out a few sections that prohibit short-term rentals in Prairie Landing. First, I will reference articles that explain how a owner becomes a part of the district. I'll first reference page ten. Article five, section five point one. Each owner by acceptance of the deed for such owner's lot or unit, regardless of whether it shall be so expressed in any such deed, hereby covenants and agrees and shall be deemed to covenant and agree to pay to the district or its nominee the initiation fee, capital assessment, annual maintenance assessment and any additional assessments. If you can go to page seven. Article three point one, membership and voting rights in the district. The owner of each lot should be a member, um, prior to the turnover date, the declarant should also be a member. And I'm not really gonna read the whole, that section. I'm gonna talk about the initiation fee. Um, when an owner buys a property, they are, um, charged an initiation fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, which shall be payable by the new owner to the district. I'm just gonna summarize, I'm not gonna read every, if that's okay, paragraph. Now, I did provide you with Jackson County property taxes for, for both of these properties that Misty Kearney in Prairie Landing is trying to make an STR. And on the property taxes on page number two, you can see there's initiation fee for this community improvement district of two hundred and fifty dollars. And then there's the annual assessment fee of five hundred and five dollars, showing that these two properties are within, um, the community improvement district. Okay, now page six, article two. Two point one. Um, says property subjected to declaration, declarant hereby declares that the property is, is and shall be held, transferred, sold, conveyed and occupied, subject to the covenants, conditions, restrictions, easements, assessments, charges and liens set forth, all of which are for the purpose of enhancing and protecting the value, desirability and attractiveness of the property. These easements, covenants, restrictions, conditions, assessment, charges and liens shall run with the property, shall be binding upon all parties having or acquiring any right, title or interest in the property, ensure and shall ensure to the benefit of each and every owner. Next, I would refer you to page, article, or, sorry, page eighteen. Sec, or article nine, section nine point one, business or commercial purposes. Except as otherwise provided in this declaration, no unit or structure erected on a lot or any portion thereof shall ever be placed, erected or used for business, professional, trade or commercial purposes provided. However, that this restriction shall not prevent an owner from maintaining an office area in this, in his residence in accordance with applicable ordinances of the city. So, since they're applying for a business license for this particular property, according to these documents, that is prohibited. Next, I would refer you to page nineteen, article nine, section nine point six, lease of a unit. No unit or part thereof shall be rented or used for transient or hotel purposes, which is defined as rental of less than one month duration or under, which occupants are provided customary hotel services, such as room service for food and beverages, maid service or similar services. And then it goes on to talk about long-term rentals as well. Um, lastly, I would refer you to page number twenty-five. Lastly, I would refer you to page number 25, Article, or Section 14, Arti, or, sorry, Article 14, Section 14.5, Enforcement. "The district or any owner may enforce these covenants, conditions, and restrictions against the district or any owner by or proceeding at law or inequity against any persons or persons violating or attempting to violate any covenant, condition, restriction, and easement, either to restrain such violation or recover damages, or to enforce any lien created, created herein against the land. The failure by the district or any owner to enforce any covenant, condition, or restriction contained herein shall in no event be deemed a waiver of the right to do so thereafter." I would ask that you honor Prairie Landing's covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and deny this applicant's request. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Should we wait to, I wanna ask Counselor their opinion, should we wait now, do it now or wait until later?
This document has no bearing on the commission's consideration of the application. That's the simplest I can put it.
Can I ask why?
It's a private document, uh, and it deals with the community improvement district. It's, it's, and it's just unrelated to the present use application that's before the commission.
Good, thank you.
I've got, well, go ahead, Commissioner.
The counsel's, counsel is consistent with the numerous opinions of counsel that have come with this commission over the years. Totally consistent.
Agreed.
And?
Thanks for Michelle.
I would, I would, I'm not disagreeing with you, I've not been the benefit of those conversations. And I ask these questions more for the education of, of the audience and myself as well, um, and for public record. This is a, I've, I've, I know enough about real estate, maybe it'd be dangerous, but people that own property are bound to these stipulations when they buy the property, is that correct?
If there's a document that purports to deal with certain property and it's still in force, all of which we do not know with respect to this particular document, again, because it's not known and it's unrelated to the application, but speaking just theoretically and without giving any legal advice as to the effect of any third-party document not relevant to these proceedings, which I cannot give, but yes, you can have documents that are bound upon people for certain reasons in their ownership of property. Um, and if they are enforceable, if they are still in force, then that can give rise to certain obligations to other parties, but they don't relate to land use applications such as the one that's before the commission today, or tonight.
So, if this is not relevant to our decision-making tonight, uh, which I understand, um, that does not mean that the neighbors cannot lean on the enforcement stipulations of this agreement. If this is in effect and applicable, then the, the property owners in, in this area still have rights and are able to enforce in accordance with the document, but it's not applicable to our decision-making tonight.
Correct, it's theoretically possible there could be many types of, uh, obligations or instruments or documents that affect an abilities, or the ability of a person to make use of their land as it relates to the rights of other entities and other persons. Um, but you're correct, uh, commission member, that, that in theory does not relate to the approval of the application before the commission. Those are separate, uh, private matters to the extent that they exist.
Okay, and one other question as it relates to her testimony. I understand that the legal protest is, is not valid, it's, we cannot entertain it, as, you know, it's, it's not able to be entered. Is it of interest to the commission, or is it, you know, advisable that we know how many people signed it? Is it irrelevant or irrelevant?
Yeah, the issue of, my recommendation would be that if there was testimony by a person that said, "I spoke to so many people," and they said that they were not in favor of it. It's hearsay, but the commission, that's like anything else that's said before, can take that into consideration. But at, at this point, there is not a legal, uh, protest petition before the commission, so there's no need, in my opinion, to examine anything related to it.
That, that's all I had, again, for public record and informational purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add, could I add something?
Um, we'll call you back up in just a minute. Are you, are you wanting to speak against this case? Can I go ahead and swear her in, if she did not swear in before? Oh, you did swear in? Oh, well, then you can come up and... Yeah, I just didn't, I wasn't sure who swore and who didn't. Will you state your full name and address, please?
Shelley Lee, 2400 South Glenview Avenue in Independence.
You could set it up on the top shelf.
Thanks.
That's wonderful.
Just to maybe clear up some confusion, I don't really understand what he's saying about it not being a valid document since, um, this CID is, uh, active. Uh, we pay $505 a year, uh, and have since 2008, when we moved into the home. Every lot pays $505 a year. That money was taken from T.E. Woods to do the development, put in roads and sewers, and we're the ones paying it back and have every year. It is an active document, it is relevant, in my opinion, to this conversation, because those were covenants and deeds and restrictions that were approved by Jackson County when that development was put in place. So, I don't really understand why it's being called not relevant, but in my opinion, it is, because we're the ones who live there, and we do not want businesses run in our, in our community. It's a single-family home community. And, you know, we've been before this commission before, trying to make sure that Prairie Landing continues to be the only new housing development in the Independent School District, and continues to grow, and hopefully will continue to grow. So, I just wanted to point out that for every year, $505, paying back the CID, it's active.
I keep forgetting to turn this on. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, can you clarify just a little bit, I think for the record, that the legality of that document and the rep, its pertinence to us and our decision?
Sure, I cannot give an opinion, it's the legality of the document. What I can give an opinion to, sorry, Commissioner McLean, Chairman McLean. Um, assuming that the document is what it purports to be, and it's a CID document, it requires payment, repayment of these annual dues and stuff, that's not uncommon. CID's are all around the metro area. Any owner of property within the CID is bound by the conditions and to pay the assessments and fees that apply to that CID. And if the applicant owns property within the, uh, CID, and that's the subject of this hearing, then they're bound to comply with whatever provisions are applicable to them. But that is unrelated to the question before the commission of whether or not the applicant may seek a land use approval for a short-term rental that's before the commission tonight.
That helps a lot, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this case? Are you sworn in, sir?
I have not been sworn in.
Let me raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? Say, "I do."
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Your full name and address, please.
My name is, uh, Tom Carlson. I live at 20,000 East 24th Terrace Court South. So, I'm basically catty-corner to this, uh, property that we're discussing. I pay my taxes, including this extra, every year, just as all we do in there. So, I'm paying an extra $500 for a document that doesn't apply to a situation. That doesn't make any sense to me. Doesn't make any bit of sense to me. Why do I pay taxes for a document that's not in force? If part of it's in force, it's all in force. Obviously, I'm against this because of all the things that Billy has said. It was obvious when she went and got the petitions that she was not giving proper information, or we would have had that done, and it would have been before you 24 hours or whatever the stipulation would have been. But she was not given that information because she had been around the neighborhood and knocking on doors, and she has at least 12 and maybe more of these petitions that are signed and notarized for us that are in the neighborhood that are against this. Now, this neighborhood has just recently gone through this, this, as has been said, there's the old part, and then there's the new part, and I happen to be part of the old part. But, and it was a pretty decent little neighborhood. And now, all of a sudden, we got a, a house on every lot, but they're all from people that wanna, uh, not all of them, many of them are people that are trying to make money, develop. It's an investment. It's not for being a long-term, single-family dwellings, which is what we're moved out there for and the reason that we live there. So, I just don't see why a decision that has to do with the money that I pay the City of Independence, which you should represent, I would think, as being the commission, if my taxes aren't representative of what we're paying, why do I pay them? You, this doesn't make any sense. So, don't tell me that part of that document is good for, so you can get my tax money, which we owe and have been paying every year, and then tell me the rest of that document is not relevant, and it doesn't apply to what we're deciding here. There is a great many people in the subdivision that do not want this in there, and I plead with you all not to approve it.
Thank you for your voice. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against? Thank you for telling me. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Linda Finger. Um, I live at 2323 South Hanover Avenue.
Thank you. Oh, now you gotta put the mic down a little bit.
I was like, I'm, so I don't live next to this house, I actually live, um, catty-corner from a house, um, by the same owner that we're gonna be talking about probably in just a few minutes, but same neighborhood. And we just bought our house last year. Um, we've lived in this neighborhood for a year, we've lived in Independence, um, on the east side for 15 years now. And we moved into this neighborhood because we wanted to stay in Independence. We could have moved anywhere else. But we chose to stay here because we love our city. And, but we wanted to raise our family in a really great neighborhood, or continue to do that. And the neighborhood that we were in, it, it, it didn't have the same values anymore that, um, we were looking for. So, we scoured all over Independence, and, um, you can ask our realtor, we probably looked at 30 to 40 different houses, drove him crazy before we finally found the one, and this was it. It had everything, the community, um, the safety we were looking for, also the quiet, peaceful, like forested area, our house backs up to, um, the airport, the old airport, but there's some forest back there, so we can hear the animals. I hear owls at night, um, coyotes chirping in the background, it's amazing. Um, my biggest concern is my children. Um, like, I know that these people said that they vet like crazy. And I know you can't, you don't always know who your neighbors are, but it only takes one, and we only have one bus stop up at the very top of the hill, so all the children at the back ends of the street have to walk down. Um, so you can't see everything that's going on. And the only person, like somebody else commented, that's being vetted is the one person that's renting the house, not the seven or, um, you know, nine other people that are gonna be there. Uh, I myself am a teacher in the school district, so I do worry about safety every single day, and these children that are coming on and off the buses. I just, I want our city to grow, but I also, so I really, I do think about the investments, I get that part of it. But I really just want to keep the neighborhoods where we have these great family, um, units. Keep it a family unit, keep that celebration of what makes Independence so great, keep that there, and find maybe some other places, like for the short-term, maybe, I don't know, closer to the actual hustle and bustle of the city. This is a really quiet area. It's not that close, I know it seems like it's close to 39th Street, that's part of why we liked it, but it is a really quiet area, and we don't have to worry about all the extra stuff. And I just, that's my biggest thing, so please keep that into, take that into account when you're making these decisions about this house and the one coming up. I, that's all I have to say.
Um, I don't think we clearly got your name and address, could you repeat it again?
It's Linda Finger, like on your hand, and it's 2323 South Hanover Avenue, Independence, Missouri, 640, um, 64057.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against? And you're sworn in, right?
Yes, I'm William Hoots, I live at 19805 East 24th Terrace Court South in Independence, just within the same community. I'm kinda surprised, this is my seventh house I've owned, and my third one in an HOA. And all three times, including this one, where I bought a year ago, actually I bought June of '21, so, but the house was finished about six months ago. I was given the covenants by the builder, who is the builder of half of the lots in this whole Prairie development. Basically, he's about half, half of doing all of them. And my real estate agent and I went over that with a fine-tooth comb, and I don't understand how, if these things aren't pertinent or not upheld, why are the buyers, I'm sure they were told, and she was told, and maybe even Shelley, why are we told that we have to follow these covenants if they're not really active? You can throw all the legalese you want, but for someone that's a nurse in a nearby hospital, I can start an IV. I don't, I don't know how to decipher and tell the builder or my agent, "Are you sure these are active, or are they not today, 'cause the sun rose on the west side, but tomorrow it'll rise on the east side?" Now, it's not gonna, I mean, I understand the non-clarification of that to homebuyers, it's very misleading. I purchased because I saw those covenants, I actively sought out for them, asked them. I wanted to buy somewhere that wasn't gonna have businesses like a multi-use or a short-term rental. I could have lived anywhere, I make enough money, I could have bought in Kansas. I wanted to stay near my dad. I don't really understand the discrepancy. I don't know the law, and I don't really understand how a developer slash builder can tell a potential buyer that these are the active covenants, even though the HOA is inactive, these covenants are in place. So, I'm, I'm against it, and if you guys can make clarification of why buyers are given all these covenants when they're not really active, I don't know. Maybe you can make light of that for someone that's naive about that stuff, but thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? State your name and address, please.
My name is also William Hoots, I'm William Mill Hoots, that was my son. I live at, uh, 23...
Can you be sworn in?
2318 South...
Yeah, I thought so.
Uh, Hartland Court. Which is a couple of blocks away from this particular house. But it's the same subdivision. I moved from Hialeah, which is just two miles away, or maybe less, after 27 years. And part of the reason I moved there was because this was going to be a single-family residential area. Never was I told that there could be short-term rentals. In fact, Shelley was my agent. And she emphatically told me that there would be no short-term rentals. I'm happy with the place. There are kids. The kids run. I live in, I happen to live in a cul-de-sac. And the kids are there. But what is really concerning is you now have two of them on the docket tonight. But there've got to be 10 to 15 houses in that subdivision that are empty. Two of them are right across the street from me. If you approve this short-term rental, they're going to be right back here again trying to rent those other two right across the street because they've been sitting there for four or five months now, empty. So, they can't sell them. So, that's what they're going to do. They're going to come right in here and try to rent, short-term rent those also. So, I'm against it for those reasons. I prefer to be living in an area that you know your neighbor. And my neighbor has two kids. They run in my yard. I have a little dog. That dog runs in their yard. And I'm very careful to get him back in this yard, her back in this yard when she, he, she goes over there. But it is a family-type environment. And we don't know what's going to go on. Not so much over there where these folks are trying to rent. But when these two houses right across the street from me, which will happen, we don't know what's going to happen. And so, therefore, I'm against it.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? All right. Would the applicant like to come up and speak to any of the issues that have been brought up?
I, I really do understand their concern about rentals. But rentals are a part of life. And there's going to be rentals. Th- this house will be either a long-term or a short-term rental. We hope it is a short-term rental because, like I said before, we have way more control over it. We can control, if they have animals. We can control how long they stay. We can control if they have a party. They are bound by contracts that they must leave. If we put long-term renters in, we don't have that control. We lose actually a lot of our control. I mean, we have rental property in Blue Springs that we've had people in there six months that haven't paid a dime. There's nothing we can do. You know? It's like, so it takes time. And with this, we have more control over it. To his concern about having more short-term rentals, you cannot have more than one. And that, what I, we've been told by the city is that on one city block or one square block, you can only have one. So, there wouldn't be allowed to have another one on that, is what we were told.
Well, it's block face, not blocks. So, actually, you could have one across the street.
Okay, so.
Or behind, but well, it's a field behind.
Okay. And the other thing is, we, and we bought in this neighborhood, we were told that the HOA is null and void. It is not, that these documents are not active, that there is no HOA in this neighborhood.
I can only take comments from the podium.
Okay. I'm just, that's what we were told, is that we would be able to rent in it. So, we're just going off what we were told by our, the builder. I'm sorry you think that's funny, sir.
Do you have any questions with applicant?
Not an applicant. I'd like to have the, I want to say the realtor lady come back up and clarify a couple of things.
Sir, you go with me?
No. Yeah, I'm done with you. Thanks.
You are done with me?
Yes. I am. Yeah, sorry.
So, again-
Wait a minute, wait, wait till you get the mic. So, I need you to clarify the CID-
Okay. CID, Community Improvement District, is one, is the overall document. The HOA, which is not currently active, is part of that document. They are two different entities. We can reestablish the HOA anytime we want. And I don't know how that's going to work legally with all the people who've been breaking the rules for the deeds and restrictions, but that'll be for an attorney to hash out with us. But I just want to be clear that the CID is an overall document. And the HOA then is under that umbrella and has to follow those deeds and restrictions. But we are not currently collecting HOA dues. TE Woods did when we first started in the neighborhood. Dues were like $450 a year. We were made all kinds of promises about pools and walking trails. And as you know, that didn't happen. So, then when TE Woods went down and the land went back to the bank, the HOA was inactivated and they didn't collect any more dues. But that doesn't mean it can't be reactivated at any time. Because this document is still in place. Now, it'll be paid off in 2025, I understand. Which will open a whole nother issue about how that, it never goes away. Commerce Bank is the trustee. They are the ones that oversee it. I understand it doesn't really ever go away, but it'll be paid back in 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You can come back up.
If the complaint is something that the CID, is a, is an issue with the CID, then the CID would need to bring that complaint, not this. And so, that's why these are null and void. I'm not an attorney, but I've been around. And so, that's what we would need to do. An HOA, it's null and void. It's defunct. I didn't pay any fees. I never saw any documents. I mean, really, the arguments of the standing of these documents is just, it's worthless. And so, based upon our application, you can't consider any of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, hold on one minute. I think that the, what we're all getting confused about is, my understanding of what the counselor is saying is that for our purposes, we can only consider the question at hand. It's not within our purview to know whether that's right, wrong, applicable, whatever. We only can do what is in front of us. Because we're just zoning and special permit, special use. So, I think that we probably should just sit in our lane and kind of make our decision based on those things. Now, you can come up if you'd like to.
Again, we're buying houses. All the current people in the last two years, it's blown, it's probably tripled the size, maybe four times the size amount of houses just in the last three years that it used to be. Which basically, it's only 10 houses or so from being completely done on both sides of Jackson. We still bought it under the auspices that we have to follow these covenants and restrictions. Whether it was legal or not, we were misled by builders slash real estate agents slash banks when we asked for these covenants because we want to check all of our cross, our Ts, you know? And you can't, that's why you guys are here, to listen to the people, as well as your zoning, like you said. So, I speak for me, but I know other people were told that these were active, is at least what you had to follow. I'm sure they were told that. And they still bought two properties. So, that's too bad for them. I feel like they should follow what we were all told, the majority of people. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any more questions of the applicant? No. Okay. I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing. And commissioners, any discussion, questions of staff?
Comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
As a commission, we're obligated to stay in our lane. Counsel is given appropriate remarks.
Just be sure to remind everybody that, make sure their microphone is on and they're speaking into-
It's on. I'm just too far away. I guess I'm getting old. Anyway, counsel is given comment. And we have to stay in our lane. And it is not incumbent upon this commission to get into the merits of the CID content or HOAs. That is beyond us. However, what, and I often reference this. I think Madam Chair at the time was, like myself, was just new to the commission. And we had a case somewhere south of 23rd Street. I was uncomfortable with it. However, there were no residents in attendance. And what Chair Lady McLean, standard commissioner, McLean at the time, said to me, "We do the business of the people. They're at work. They're doing the best they can. We have the obligation to do what is right by the people." I'll tell anyone, I am a proponent, an advocate for short-term leasing because I've seen the positive impacts in certain communities. However, property owners have the right to the quiet enjoyment of their home. And when anything poses a threat to that, it is a threat to their psychological comfort. Neighborhoods' integritys have to be preserved. And the will of the people must be recognized. Not because of an HOA, not because of a CID. That's not our business here. But we are obligated to listen to the voices of the people, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns?
So, as I, and I agree, thank you, Billy. Well spoken. And I agree with you. So, as I see it, there's two outcomes here. And I'll ask for an interpretation thereof. But if, if this case is approved, then the property owners, the neighboring property owners have, they believe recourse through this document. They can do what they must do, as they deem appropriate. If this case is denied, then the recourse for the applicant is to file an appeal and bring whatever legal standing they feel they have to bear.
To city council.
To city council. So, those are the two, the two outcomes as I see it here.
I have a comment. As I've stated earlier tonight, until there's better regulations in place, I, I am opposed to short-term rentals. But Misty, I have to tell you, as an owner and your due diligence, I highly support that. I, I think you are intending to be the best person to operate a business such as short-term rentals. I think the homeowners around you have clearly spoken with their discomfort with that. And we can only vote on the merits of, of your application at this time. But I would encourage you to appeal if that's the case.
Any other comments and concerns?
Madam Chair, just what I see, this neighborhood here is what, is like some people have stated, that this is supposed to be a single-family neighborhood. We're trying to get single-family neighborhoods people to move to this area. I've heard a lot of people say that that's why they moved to this neighborhood. So, I, my position would be, I'd have to decline this because that's what people in the neighborhood would like to have. So, that's where I stand at.
Further clarification. It could be a single-family, long-term rental that is allowed. You know, that is another option. You know, and it says it's still a rental.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the matter of case number 22-400-14, short-term rental at 20013 East 24th Terrace Court South, I move for approval with the stipulations as so stated, also with the addition of the noise monitoring system.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Michelle?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Let's see. Commissioner L. Wiley?
No.
H. Wiley, okay. And Chairman McLean?
No. Case number 22-400-14, short-term rental at 213 East 24th Terrace Court South, has been denied. And the recourse is the, the next city council.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
The next case is going to be wholly duplicative-
Right.
-of, of the, the last hour that we've enjoyed here together. I, but I do not want to, I, I don't know that we can shirk due process. Is, is there a way to streamline this? Because it's going to be the same exact conversation with only the report being different at the front end.
Yeah. I don't know.
We have to do the protocol.
We have to do protocol, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Can't blame you for trying.
It's a good try. Okay. And really, this, this speaks to why we do it this, the way we do it is to be fair and balanced and, and consider each case completely separate and on its own merits. So, I think it, I think it is important. Okay. Next case is case 22-400-15, short-term rental at 2316 South Hanover Avenue. Request by Misty Kearney for a short-time rental. Staff, will you give a report?
And since this report is nearly identical, I'll just go over the highlights that are different.
Thank you.
Make this quite short. Okay. So, same vicinity map. This is just, you can see on Hanover, this is about two blocks to the northeast, roughly, where the other case was. They're on Hanover Avenue. And which is at 2316 South Hanover. This house is a little bit different. 2,007 square feet. And is a two-story home. But same number of bedrooms. Of course, same general neighborhood. The one big difference being it's not on the edge of the addition, so it doesn't have a big field behind it. It's more in the middle, where it's got neighbors surrounding the backside. And the parking situation is, is fairly similar. I guess, I saw this, six cars, I think. But these are the, four cars. Could fit in the, there, of course, two in the garage. Again, the rule of guest and security situation for the property is the same. There, it's also a VRBO and on the Airbnb website. So, and, and the guests will get the rules, of course, and, and the manager's number. And, and the warnings will be the same as what was described in the previous case. Is what the trash approval. And of course, it got the same inspections from the, from the fire inspector as, as the other case did. So, this one, I actually had the correct drawings and the PowerPoint. So, here's the plot plan for this particular lot. So, the other one would have had the plot plan as well. And here is your nearest existing rental map showing that there aren't any others. And that these two will be the first probably in this area. If they, well, the other one was, would have been, so. So, and, so here's this house, unlike the other one, there was a ranch, this is a, a two-story. Like I said, there's neighbors behind. This is looking north up Hanover. And then this is looking more to the northeast, east across the street from it. And you can see the houses that are cattycornered down to the southeast. And this is looking more directly southeast on the property. And staff recommendation was approval for this one as well. And with this, we have the same requested conditions as the previous case. Short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and on online platforms. Two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by the short-term rental section of the UDS. And number three, the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to eight adults, ten persons total.
Thank you. Would you like to come back, would the applicant like to come back up and speak to this case?
I just feel that we did exactly what the city asked, and we actually follow more of the city guidelines and codes that you've asked than the previous one that was accepted. And I just don't feel, like, if these truly are inactive, then they have every right to contact a lawyer and take it from us and say, hey, you cannot do this. But this is not the information that we were giving, and it's very upsetting that somebody would sit in this court, this, I don't know what room I'm in, but, and laugh at me. I have done what I have been asked to do. I don't, I understand that this is their home, but it is also our property, and we do have the right to rent this property, and it will be a rental. And that's just the facts. And I just, my goal was to try to make it the best it could be for this community, and I don't think that they should have the right to come in here, even though I did everything I was supposed to do, and take that from me. Like, they just, they should have to go to court and do what they are supposed to do because the HOA is not voi, is not valid. And the reason, if it was so important for them to keep these things going, they would have kept paying their dues, they would have kept doing their HOA, they would have protected their community. But they didn't. And now, all of a sudden, even though I have done everything I was asked to do, especially on this one, I mean, this one is full, like, it's ready to go. Because I did what I was asked to do by the city, and now I'm supposed to go in there and take thousands of dollars of furniture and just get rid of it because they don't want it rented? Like, that's, it's just, I don't see how that's okay, because I'm also a member, I'm also a citizen of Independence, Missouri, and I also pay taxes in this town, and I've also lived here my whole life. And I also feel like I should have the right. I'm not putting a mass murderer next to them, just as if I rent this long-term, I'm only going to vet the person who signs that contract. I, I have no control over who comes in and out of that property. But you know what? When it's short-term rental, I meet every person there. I, I talk to them, they have my phone number, all of them can have my phone number. There's nothing hidden there. And I, I know wholeheartedly, because I've been in this business, that it is safer to have short-term rentals next to you than it is sometimes long-term. But you have no control over your neighbors. But I'm trying my best to make sure that their community stays safe, and I just think that my rights should also be heard. And if they don't want to, then fine, the other one's gone. But I feel like I should still get this one.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ma'am? Now, when you say you can't vet long-term rentals, you can vet every person that's on a long-term rental because you put every name on the rentals on a long-term.
You cannot control once they get in there.
I know, you can't control, you can't, well, you can't control a short-term rental once they get in.
You're right.
But I'm just saying, you can vet long-term rentals, people, because you put every name on there. When you rent a short-term, you only put one name on there, correct?
Well, they put the family on there, like the husband and wife that would rent it, is how we do it.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm trying, because I don't do short-term rentals, I've never seen one, I've never done one, I'm just going by what I hearsay from people, is that you get to vet just the person that signs up for.
Like, the thing that, that, most of the rentals that I've stayed in, what they do is, instead, it's not just the VRBO thing that you sign, you send over your own, like, kind of like legal document, and they have to put every person, like, everybody's name. So, like, when we stay down at Table Rock, we write everyone's name that's staying in the property.
Okay, so, let's see, that's why I'm learning some of the stuff, that's why I need to know, because people are saying, you only get one person, I don't know, do they see everybody that's going to be in there? That's what I'm asking, says, hey, that's something I did not know, that's why I'm trying.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, because I mean, I know on long-term rentals, and you can do that, plus, you say on long-term rentals, you can, because I've seen some of the contracts of long-term rentals, they can be thirty-some pages long that they sign. And I'm saying, you can do a lot of things with long-term rentals, I don't know if you can do that with short-term rentals.
I agree with you, and our business is investment real estate, that's, that's what we do. My husband has been doing long-term rentals for twenty-five years, and once they get in, they have so many more rights than you think.
I know, I understand that, I understand that.
And so, so we, yes, we do know who's going in, but once that, we don't have a clue who's in those homes, and we can't, we can't come in it, we don't have rights to come in them. So like, a short-term rental, sorry, I feel like I'm way up in that. Short-term rental, I have right to access that property anytime I want. I do not have to give notice, I do not have to, like, I show up at that door and I can enter the property. Long-term rentals, I have to give, I think it's twenty-four to forty-eight hours, I have to, if they decide to stop paying, or they decide to start causing issues, like, they were saying in those, some of those rentals earlier, I have to get court orders, like, right now, we have one that's been going five to six months, and we can't even get in front of a judge to fix it.
I understand that, I understand, I understand that. I mean, that's just part of doing business too, because you, that's your, that's your thing. But you also got to understand, we're listening to the people that are around there, I mean, they're giving their opinions, why they don't want short-term rentals. I mean, I wish they'd learned, I mean, short-term rentals sound good to me because you do keep it cleaner, like I said. The thing, because you want to advertise it because you want to make it there. But I got to deal with the feelings of the neighborhood, what they want at this time. They, they might change their mind once they see long-term rentals, I don't know, because I've seen long-term rentals, I go around and work on long-term rentals, and trust me, they are not nice. So, I understand where you're coming from.
I just wish that they would try to understand that.
Well, you got to remember, a lot of the people haven't seen long-term rentals, or some of them have, some of them haven't, but that's the difference, that's, but we got to listen to our people.
But I'm also the people.
I know, I'm listening to you, that's why I'm talking to you.
I know.
Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me just, as best I can soften the blow, because it tore me to pieces, to tear your dream to pieces. And I could cry with you. But I'll, I'll never forget the tongue-lashing that I took from then Commissioner McCain, McLean, about the obligation of this commission. And, and every case is reviewed on its own merit, and the decision of this commission had nothing to do with that CID or that HOA. It was about preserving the integrity of that little bit, big piece of community, and their quiet enjoyment, and as to why they purchased their home. I cry with you.
I just don't understand how it's still not, and, I'm sorry. I don't understand how.
You do, you do have an appeals right. Our decision, when we decline an application, you still have the right to appeal to the City Council.
I'm not even upset about the other one.
And maybe, maybe they have greater wisdom than we, but my heart is with you.
Like, I'm okay not having both of them, I get that, they don't want that in the neighborhood, but, I don't know. I'm sorry.
I don't apologize, you've invested your heart and soul, clearly, and this is your business, as you stated, and that those do get intertwined in the fabric of your life, and they do become you. Any other questions of the applicant before we let you sit down for a minute? I will attest, though, with the VRBO, like, I have a very big family, and on some of those homes, you have to list every name and the age.
Yeah.
That is, that is true.
You might, you might want to note, or she has, if she does appeal, she has five business days to do so.
Thank you. Can I ask real quick what the city's obligation is after this hearing, to make sure that they know that, the appeal process?
From what I remember, there was one about two months ago or so. I think that they were called the next day, I, I don't know if it was my case or yours, but it was called the next day, or emailed them a letter saying, you know, the planning commission denied your application, however, you have five business days from the date of this meeting to, to appeal to the City Council. And basically, I think they turn in a letter saying that they, you know, the situation and all that, and then we assemble a, sort of a staff reporter, a cover sheet that goes to the City Council. They do not take any new testimony, they base their decision on the records.
Okay. Thank you.
So they take no new testimony?
It's based on what they read from what they heard here, correct? Which is why it's important, important to say things out loud. Um, any other questions before we let her sit down? Go ahead and have a seat, please. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this case? Sir, come on up. And if you'll state your name and address again, it's a new case.
It's William L. Hoots, 2318 South Heartland Court, Independence, Missouri. I'm about a block away from that particular property. And I know that their heart is in the right place, and I do know this, I owned two rental houses myself, and they were long-term rentals. One of them was, a tenant was in there for four years, the other one was for two years. We had, it was even sold to them with an option to buy. Neither one of them opted to buy, we put them on the market, and we sold the houses. But the property was taken care of, I'm, I'm a little in the dark, because you have a long-term rental, you're going to let everything go to pot? That's your house. You live there, you're not proud of your house? I understand, there are people that are, that don't take, have to take care of their property, but there are those that do. So I don't see an issue, myself, with a long-term rental. I do see an issue with a short-term rental, so I'm still against it for all the previous reasons that I stated before.
Thank you.
Two questions. What's the length of the driveway?
I, I don't, I'm not sure.
Well, that was the other one. That was the other one, I'm not sure about this one, but I walk my dog past that house every day, and I don't know that you can get four cars.
That's right, it's twenty-six feet.
Yeah, you can't get four cars in that driveway.
Okay, so, I was wrong saying six, so two in the garage, two in the driveway, so you got the four.
Yeah, there's no possible way you get four cars in that driveway.
So two in the car, two in the garage, two.
Well, some people, some people use storage for their garage. One way or the other, I, I don't see they're getting four cars in there, but, anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you. And again, if you don't mind stating your name and your address again, new case.
Shelley Lee, 2400 South Glenview Avenue, Independence. I just want this not to be personal, because it's very clear that you've put a lot of time and energy into this.
You have to.
It's clear she's put a lot of time and energy into this, and this is not about it being personal. And on the other hand, I don't like it being insinuated that we should have gotten our act together and organized, because she doesn't know the history of this neighborhood and everything that we've been put through, all the promises we were made that never came true. But you are a resident there now, you own property there, and you are part of the CID, because she's now a member of the CID and pays the dues, just like the rest of us. So, I understand, I don't know what the builder told her, but they didn't do their due diligence either in not sharing with them the history of the neighborhood when they sold the houses. So, that's on that builder that didn't share that information, clearly, some of the builders did, we have no control over that, once they buy the lot, and once they put the house up, what they tell the residents, but she didn't have all the information either, so, again, it's not personal, but we're all in this together now.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let me just make it abundantly clear here. The position of this commission has absolutely nothing to do with the CID or the HOA. Nothing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other, is there anybody else who would like to speak against this case? Come on up. Let's let her, can, I let you all duke it out, but I'm going to let her go first. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Tamara Atkinson, I live at 2320 South Hanover Avenue, I'm directly south of this house.
Hold the microphone.
And can you state your name and address once again, so we make sure that it got heard?
Tamara Atkinson, I'm at 2320 South Hanover Avenue, directly south where that white picket fence is, that's my house. I've been a resident of Independence for forty-two years. I started building my house in Prairie Landing in 2009. I built it to retire there. I met Misty, and she's a very well-spoken lady, she's very nice. I told her my concerns, and we talked about it back and forth, she made some good points on short-term rental versus long-term, but my thing is, I, I want to know who my neighbor is. I don't want them changing every thirty days. I'm a senior citizen, I live alone. I'm not used to speaking in front of people.
You're fine.
But like I said, Misty's a very nice woman, I would, if it was her family moving in, up until a few minutes ago, I would have said, "Welcome in," but with her husband storming out, threatening us with Section 8 housing now, I didn't appreciate that at all. So, I, I think there's going to be a little discourse in the neighborhood, but we were told there would not be any rentals when we built. That's why I built my home there, to retire. We were supposed to have the lakes and this, that, all the stuff we didn't get. You guys have seen us here before for other issues, it seems like those of us in Prairie Landing keep having to come before the commission to protect our neighborhood, that's all we're trying to do now. Nothing against Misty and her family. We want homeowners, they have a vested interest if you reside in the neighborhood, in the city. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this case? I'm going to let her go first, that's okay. Are you, are you sworn in?
I'm not.
Okay, will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Sonia Barnhard, 2317 South Heartland Court. It's going to be fourteen years since I've lived in my house, I think most of us know disappointment, I know a lot of disappointment, and I'm not used to speaking in front either, I know, there goes my voice.
You're just fine, it's just us, it's okay.
Anyway, there's been a lot of disappointment since I moved into my house. If you look right in front of the chamber, there's a memorial tree, and that is my husband's memorial tree. And this was supposed to be our dream home, and where we were going to raise our kids, and my son was two, and my daughter was five, it was going to be an awesome place to live. And my son was two, and my daughter was five, it was gonna be an awesome place to live. The fishing lakes, the walking trails that hooked up to Little Blue Trace Park, and it was gonna be an awesome place to live. We were told a lot of different things that we were supposed to have, and of course, we've gotten nothing. So, I know a lot about disappointment, and so do my neighbors. We just want a safe place to live, and I wanna be able to, I mean, my kids are nineteen, almost twenty, and Noah's sixteen. Just recently, his car got broken into. First time ever felt unsafe in my neighborhood. I've always felt safe. I walk my dog in the middle of the night, 'cause I'm kind of a night owl. Probably shouldn't do that. Definitely won't be, you know, I have to think twice before I go out now. I just, we want a safe place, we know about disappointment, but I do worry about short-term rentals, and I'm just against it, so, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. And again, if you will restate your name and address, please.
My name is Linda Finger, I live at twenty-three twenty-three South Hanover Avenue. You can actually see my house in some of these pictures, because I am directly diagonal from this house. Sorry, am I not talking in, can you hear me?
You just need.
Okay, sorry, I move around when I talk. I'm a teacher, so I like to move. But, you know, one thing I wanna say, I heard her talk about their dream, this is their investment, you know. Sorry.
You're okay, take your time.
This is really emotional for us, too, because this is our dream, it's our investment. Also, this is our retirement home, we were thinking long-term for the future. And I'm thinking, if eventually, like, what is this going to do to the property values if we get a bunch of rental houses in this community that's supposed to be, like, one of the places that people wanted to live in Independence? I remember driving past this community when it first was built, thinking, gosh, man, those people must have it really good. I never thought I'd be able to live in this community, and it was possible one day. And I just don't know that bringing in all this is going to really add anything to our community. So, I'm sorry, I know that's probably not what some people wanna hear, but not everybody's dream is the same, and I think we have to keep that into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? Seeing none, the, do you wanna come back up and speak anymore? Are you sure? All right, thank you. The public portion of this hearing is closed, commissioners. What do I know?
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
Yes.
Case twenty-two dash four hundred dash fifteen, for approval. With the conditions, also adding the noise alert.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second, call the roll, vote, please.
Commissioner Ferguson.
No.
Commissioner Michelle.
No.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner Preston.
No.
Commissioner Wiley.
No.
And Chairman McClain.
No. Case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash fifteen, short-term rental at twenty-three sixteen South Hanover Avenue has been denied. And again, you know you have recourse. I think that, if I can make a comment, I mean, I think this is emotional for all of us. I think that short-term has always been a challenge to this commission. I will say, I live on a street with four short-terms, but I also live in a historic district, district, where visitors want to come because they're close to things. I've never had one problem. In fact, new visitors walking along the street and super excited about being in Independence has been kind of a fun thing to watch. I had the same feelings that I know that you all have. However, for me, this is a very residential space, and so I understand why you wanna protect that, I really, really do. And I feel for you as a businesswoman, because I know what you've put into this, and I get that. And I know that your heart is in improving Independence, and so I also respect that and thank you for that. I just, for me, it just felt like the wrong space for it. And that's just me. But thank you, everybody, for your voices. It is really important to come and speak, and we appreciate that. I know it's been a long night. Okay, um, roundtable, next meeting is December thirteenth, where we will hear the continued case, I'm guessing. Anything else for the greater good? You just wanna go home.
I would just like to say I appreciate the voices of all the applicants and all the, and the public that came, and I appreciate the work that we're doing.
Yep. All right, thank you, everybody. Did you wanna say something? I don't wanna cut you off.
Wait a minute, I got four months to make up for, let's start tonight.
Okay, can I cut you off at nine-thirty-nine? This meeting is adjourned at nine-thirty-nine PM.